Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Roger.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
There he is.
All right, welcome, everyone. So just to let you know, right before our meeting this evening, we held a reception to honor and thank our committee volunteers. I will just read out the committees that we have here in Tacoma Park that residents serve on and help us do our job here. We have the Board of Elections, our Commemoration Commission, the Commission on Landlord Tenet Affairs, or known as COLTA, the Committee on the Environment, our Energy Emergency Preparedness Committee, the Ethics Commission, our Facade Advisory Board, the Noise Control Board, the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee, the Police Employees Retirement Plan Committee, our Recreation Committee, Safe Roadways Committee, our Tree Commission, the Youth Council, and the Chief's Advisory Committee. And we honored all of the members of those committees this evening and thanked them with a reception. As I said, we could not do our job here as a city council unless residents really helped us on all of those committees, so we're grateful. In addition, tonight, we recognized Steve Ney, who -- yes, Steve, stand up and give a round of applause. Steve has put in countless hours as a tutor in providing pro bono legal assistance to residents and their families and children who live in Essex House as part of the ACES program. So, thank you, Steve, for all you do there.
Great.
Terrific. All right, this evening, there's only one slight change, depending on when you check the agenda. We are going to start off with our representative from our Youth Council giving us an update. So Elliot, you want to start?
Hello, my name is Elliot Davy, and I'm the City Council Liaison from the Youth Council. We had our last meeting on June 11th, and I think our biggest piece of news that's very exciting is we have sent out our newsletter. And I know a lot of you have seen it already on the council, but to everyone else out there in the community, our Youth Council newsletter is up on the city website, on the Youth Council page, if you want to check it out, see what we've been doing, if you haven't heard all of my updates at these meetings. So, also at our last meeting, we had a young member of our community named Will come in and talk about the compostable straw initiatives that he's trying to -- he and his friends are trying to implement in local restaurants, and he was -- came in to ask if he had the Youth Council support, and yes, we support these initiatives as a Youth Council. And also, at our last meeting, we had some -- we talked, speaking of compostable straws, about just we're thinking about different composting initiatives we can potentially think about in the school system, because apparently composting is not on the approved list of MCPS activities, which seems in some ways an oversight. Even if there isn't an official program through the school system, it shouldn't be -- it should still be allowed if schools want to participate in their own version of composting. And those were sort of the key highlights from our last meeting. We're very excited about the newsletter. We're going to continue working on our next ones, and thank you for listening, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Elliot. Actually, I have one quick question for you. Is the Youth Council meeting over the summer?
We're going to have a few meetings. We're taking a little bit of a break. I can't remember exactly the dates, but we are going to have a few meetings, yes.
Great, thank you so much. Next up, we have Brandon Johns from Man Up, Making a New United People, to provide a report. We partner with Man Up here in the city, and we'll let Brandon talk about the great program he offers.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Hello, councilmembers, city staff, Mayor Stewart. Very thankful to be here today and speak about the program and the report. First, I just want to say thank you for the support that the city's offered us. We have now, this March, well, upcoming this year, will be nine years in Tacoma Park that we've served, and for the last -- I mean, you've always supported us from a spirit sense, but for the last few years, you've also supported us financially in continuing to grow our program, so we appreciate that. This year, we want to kind of speak about what's been done this year. There've been a few -- the program has fluctuated some, but there's been some great kind of progress. We really want to detail that. Before that, though, I just want to go over a quick story that happened yesterday, really quickly. So yesterday, we were doing our regular programming, and we had our Tuesday session, and during the summer months, our numbers slightly waned. We usually have around 10 or so kids in the summer, and the numbers go down a little bit per session for every Tuesday. But yesterday, we had two students come, not students anymore, we had two young men come who actually started the program in 2009, when we began, that came back and kind of spoke to some of the young people. And I didn't even know they were coming back. They said they were in the area, and they just remembered that we're here on Tuesdays at 6:30, and they came back, and they spoke to the young people. And the conversation, it was real organic. It was nothing made up, and these young people are -- they're great young men, they're still on their search and their path going forward, and that's really what they spoke to these other young people about as well. They told them about kind of some of the great things they did, some of the wrong turns they made, but it was really a progressive conversation. And more so than me, the conversation was had was the fact that these young men at 25 still felt like they had a family home with Man Up, and it's something that was fostered and really built between Tacoma Park and Man Up. So I appreciate always your support, and a lot of these young people also always feel comfortable to have a place to come in this center. So that just really felt good, so I was really -- I wanted to sell that story to start, because that's something that really happened yesterday, so it was really organic, but I appreciate how that happened. So this year, like I said, I think we've somewhat fluctuated over the last couple of years. Man Up, we've been a really heavily part of kind of the city in past years. We've expanded a number of our programs. We work with young people, really, at this point, kindergarten through 25, in a number of different areas. We're in DC, we are in Prince George's County, and we do -- we have at-the-school programs, we work in middle schools. So I think a lot of our kind of day-to-day inner workings with Tacoma Park has slightly dissipated from that point. We've still done some really strong things, we've always met and always had our program, and this year, what we've done, actually the last two years, we had a partnership with Prince George's County where we work with their young people, and what we've had, last year, we had six, this year, we had 10 of our young people from Tacoma Park work there, and what they do is they do educational, so we do educational training, so little fun, interactive games that we can have, we can teach young people to really dislike math and like English and like learning and things like that to get them set, but we had these young people in our program facilitating all those programs. So they're the ones doing it, they're learning to be on time, they're learning to be present, they're learning to do lesson plans and things of that nature. So it's something that we really appreciate, and once again, this is something that we were able to do because of the support that we got from the city, and we really want to continue programs like this. This is now the second year, and like I said, I think they've learned a lot, they've also got money in their pocket, which helps to end their school year, and this is something that we just, we really think we can continue to grow, and we want to see for years past. We've also had a number of young people that have graduated. We actually have a young person in here today that's graduated from college. Natalia, if you want to wave your hand, we can give her a round of applause. And she was actually one of the ones who began when we started as well, and now she just graduated from La Salle University. So that is something that we've also said. We've had a number of young people that have graduated this year, from college and from high school. We are continuing to support the young people that are in our program as well. We also started some different series that we're really trying to -- we are trying to build, and next year, the hope is to really build more of that synergy that we did have with the city and be more involved. But this year, we started off an interview series, and we're doing it somewhere with Tacoma Park TV, and what we're doing is trying to have us, have the young people in Tacoma Park be useful and come out and really interview and meet and talk to the different people of the community. The first interview was with Councilmember Jared Smith. We did it at Montgomery College. It was a great conversation, and it was something that the young people learned a lot. I think he may have learned some things from them, and this is a dialogue that I think often time we miss. So what we're really trying to do is, once again, kind of bridge those gaps between the people in the community. We have a particular sect of young people on in this area, a lot from Maple Avenue, a lot from other areas, but they come to us, and I think this is really what we are and what we've kind of always done is be a liaison and just someone that can build bridges between us and the rest of the community as well. So we're hoping to really continue that and build more on that this year, and really find other ways. I know we tried to do a few things with the rec staff, and I think some of those are missed, but next year, for sure, we want to really build this back in. So I think we can be very supportive of what you all are trying to do, and I think you all can do the same for us. So yeah, we're just really looking forward to that. I'm trying to see if I missed any of my major notes. But yeah, I think that is kind of the crust and major part of what I wanted to really explain for this year. We are still working in the summertime, so we're there every Tuesday, so if anyone wants to stop by, we're there from 6:30 to 8, really from 6:30 to 8:30. And then we also do supplementary programs other days as well, so if you want to reach out to us, just let me know, you can reach out to me, give me my email later on, and yeah, just want to continue to build, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And just so people know, the report you gave, you sent to the council, is up on the city website, attached to the agenda. So, thank you very much for being here this evening and giving us a report on your work. Thank you. And thank you for your comment. Yes, sure.
No, I just wanted to thank you for the work that you do, because this has been an incredible day for me. I came from luncheon today, we're hearing about other youth program similar to yours, but if there's anything that you need from this council, please let us know.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
You've got my number, you can call me anytime.
Hey, guys, what's the news? I appreciate that.
Mr. Smith, you're not yet done.
And I would just like to say I really appreciate everything that Man Up has done, not just in Tacoma Park, and it's really exciting to see the program grow, not just in DC, but our neighbor Prince George's County, that's really, really important. How did you guys get into Prince George's?
That was actually introduction by you, Councilmember Smith, as well.
I'm glad I could help out, but thank you, Mr. Johns, I appreciate all you --
Thank you.
-- everything that you've done for our community.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Great, now we will have, we'll move on to our report on the Tacoma Junction traffic studies, and if the city manager wants to preview this.
I'm not, I don't have a whole lot to say. I'm happy to bring both the Traffic Group and AMT, the two different firms that have done traffic studies related to the Tacoma Junction here this evening. They have made previous presentations to us, but since that time, they finalized their two reports. They've, we think that the timing numbers for the counts at the junction intersections have stopped bouncing, and so those have been incorporated into the studies as well as the background information on other projects going around in the area. And I'm not sure which one, I think, I think I'll bring up the Traffic Group first, and why don't you go ahead and give us an update on kind of a brief overview, and then what has changed since the last time you were here?
Okay.
While they're doing that, my name, nice to see you all again, and welcome. I had a mayor, I think the last couple times we've been here, you've been out of town, unfortunately. I'm Glenn Cook, I'm the Senior Vice President of the Traffic Group, and Paul Doer, he's in charge of our Design Division, and we've been here on numerous occasions, and the last time, the big difference between our previous visits and this visit is when we first came here, we had done a traffic study based on existing conditions in the field at that time. But shortly after that, Montgomery County came in and modified the traffic signals and re-timed them, and that changed a lot of things that were going on at the intersection. And I believe the last time we were here was the first night that those new timings had been placed on the intersection, and people were saying, seemed like they were working better. So what we did was we went back, we got the new information from the county, they took two or three weeks to tweak the numbers, which is what we normally do in the profession, and they implemented that timing. So then we went back and redid our study and compared it to what was happening in the field with the new signal timing and the adjustments that they had made. And I'm glad to report, and we'll go through it, that things are working better than they were prior to the implementation of the timing. Based on the county's guidelines, parking planning's guidelines, for an intersection to be operating at an acceptable level, the delay has to be less than 80 seconds. If it's over 80 seconds, the county requires some type of mitigating improvements to make the intersection work better. And when we went back and retested the intersections, we found out that under the existing traffic conditions, we would be less than 80 seconds. So if nothing else was going to happen at this intersection and things stayed the way they were right now, it would be operating within the standards that the county normally requires. The problem is, we're on the threshold of going into that next area. And in our study, we include what we call background traffic, which is traffic generated by other developments normally which have already received approval, and we add that traffic to the road network and reevaluate it. When we do it in the case of Tacoma Junction, we find that the intersection breaks down and begins to fail. So the additional traffic over and above what you're experiencing today will cause the intersection to degrade to a level that's not acceptable based on county standards, okay? And that's before we even add on traffic from the Tacoma Junction project. Obviously, we add more traffic, so it further degrades the intersection, but we're not the culprit that necessarily is causing the failure, we're a contributor, just like the existing traffic is, and just like the background traffic is. Oh, you want to get the next one? Okay. What we looked at was using the existing intersection with no crosswalk and no all-red phase, basically looking like it was before the county came in and made their changes and put in the all-red sequence and everything. And again, like I said, we were, we were very much on the edge of a failing or an acceptable intersection. When we added the capacity or the vehicles from the other developments that are planned in the area, we found that we were going to be in a failing condition. So we, some type of improvement needed to be implemented, and obviously, the improvements that the county made...
Just want to say that again, so you're talking about the baseline, sorry.
I always forget. You're talking about the baseline with no all-red phase, you're talking about so a few months ago, that if you added the all-red phase, would you already be failing in the existing conditions?
With the new numbers that the county has put on, with the all-red, we just barely meet the standard.
Okay, thank you for repeating that.
But when we add other traffic to the intersection, then it begins to fail, so some type of improvements need to be made. We believe, based on our experience, the county's done a very nice job of what they've done, and we have some exhibits that will show you that, that show that things are better, definitely, than they were prior to them implementing their improvements. If a new improvement is needed, as you all know, we've been talking about the realignment of the intersection to come in opposite Sycamore, and what that does is that makes the intersection a longer intersection, basically, and provides more queuing space between the signalized intersections, which is one of the major problems up here, is that, you know, vehicles do queue up between the intersections. And while it's better with the new timing, with the recommended improvement of the realignment of the intersection, that would certainly make that a much nicer situation, because we'd have more space there. Let me go to the next one. Oh, okay, the other issue is, while the existing intersection is going to be operating better than it was prior to the county, there are still operational issues at the intersection. And, for example, the buses, that when they stop and people go around them in the wrong lane and everything, those situations are still going to exist. So it's not necessarily just a capacity issue that's driving the possibility of making improvements, but there's also operational issues that need to be taken into consideration to make it a safer operating intersection. Again, our traffic study, these same information, basically, that we gave you before, we looked at existing background total, the, we looked at the morning peak hour, the evening peak hour, and the number of trips are the same. We prepared a model to model it rather than just doing, a lot of times, when you look at intersections, you look at them as isolated locations, but at this particular location, you can't do that, because the two intersections feed off of one another. So what you have to do is you have to model it. So we prepared a model, and that's what we used as a basis for our analysis, just like we did the first time. And if you look at the next slide, basically, the, the, yeah, the delay shown in black is what we had when we were here before the county made their changes. With the county changes, things changed to what's shown in red.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, so the information that has a line through it is the information that we presented before, and then, so in the first case, we had 65.1, that entire intersection was reduced below the 80-second requirement, so they can't see the red.
That's right, okay. And likewise, following that same line across, the next block is where the background traffic is, and you see, it went to 99.5, and that's where the failure is from the traffic that's being generated by other developments in the area. You want to explain the caring?
So this is, the information that's shown, not in yellow, is the previous information. So if you look at southbound Carroll Avenue, can you see the arrow on your screen? So the southbound left turn was at over 1,000 feet backup queue, and then with the new county's signal timing, it's dropped down to 420. So the county's timing changes on pretty much, all the queue lengths has substantially reduced the queues, and again, we're talking about just existing conditions. The southbound Philadelphia Avenue, unfortunately, was the one who took the hit, and as Glenn and I drove here today, it was backed up pretty, pretty long distance, if you've seen it. So again, this shows before the county change to what's existing today. So the next is the evening peak. Again, the county changes had a very good effect on the queuing distances. So this shows the new intersection configuration, again, with the current queue lengths in the yellow, again, well, it is more green on the screen. So with the new intersection design, the blue numbers are substantially less, and that takes in consideration the operation that we've, we presented earlier, how the intersection would operate. So that's the morning peak is much better, and the evening peak. One thing to point out, in the morning peak, the queue, the queue lengths for eastbound Carroll at the new intersection are about midway to the truck lane, so we have, and again, this is an average over 10 simulation, it takes 10 simulations and averages that information to come up with the queue length. So, so again, we have room for vehicles to turn out and easily make a right turn, and then the right turn queue to go to northbound on Philadelphia is only 45 feet in the morning peak. So then we go to the evening peak, because the heavy movement from the west to get both eastbound on Carroll and northbound on Carroll, I'm sorry, eastbound on Ethan Allen and northbound on Carroll, I went, I must have advanced, yeah. So the queue lengths eastbound are longer, but they're still less than what exists today.
Just to be clear, so it's the blue numbers that would be with the intersection design change?
Correct. And they're all basically less than what occurs today?
Right, so can I just clarify, so like over on Philadelphia, where it's the bad backup now, we should be, if we did this reconfiguration, it's the blue number there?
Correct, it'll drop to 330. And these numbers are all pulled out of the report, I basically just put them in a graphic form.
It's easier to understand in a graphic form.
Could I just ask a question? So, this particular configuration, if it were agreed to, appears to show some improvements. Obviously, whether, if we were to decide to do something like this, it would take quite a while to get there. So I guess the question I would have is, what should happen between now and then? Because I'm, just in the last week, been contacted by a number of residents of Philadelphia who pointed out that in the late afternoon, it's worse than it's ever been. So I don't think the answer can be that, well, they just put up with that until however many years go by, until we figure out and get the money for it and the planning and do this. So what, any thoughts on that?
So the background trips, you know, they're slowly coming online, you know, the daycare will open up at some point, and the other background projects will come on board, so traffic will gradually increase, and then the Tacoma Junction project, you know, depending on their construction schedule and when they open and start generating trips, could easily be a year out. So we would work with State Highway and the county to try to come up with this intersection fix, finalize all the details, and get some construction drawings going, and actually submit for an access permit to make these happen, and whether, who pays for it, you know, those things have to get worked out. But, you know, this, this intersection could be approved and constructed fairly quickly, you know, I'll let Glenn say about the time.
Yeah, just like the, the improvements won't be there overnight, we all understand that, it takes time. But the same thing goes for the traffic to be generated by the other nearby developments. That's going to be added to the road network gradually over a period of time. Will there be a point at somewhere during construction that we tip over that standard or so? As long as we know the improvements are underway, and they're moving forward, and they're bonded, normally, government finds that to be acceptable, because they know they're going to be here, you know, in the near future. But the, there's no way of knowing exactly how quickly the nearby developments are going to be building out and when all that traffic's going to be in there, but they'll both be going on at the same time.
Can, can you detail what these developments are that are going on that are going to contribute to the traffic?
Sure. We included, oops, that's Tacoma, that's us. There were five developments that we were asked to take into consideration. Normally, when we do a traffic study, we go to park and planning. And parking planning gives us a list of the developments that we need to include as background traffic. Normally, they're projects that have received approval, okay? So they're given, they know they're going to move forward. In this particular case, based on comments made here at our meetings, we were familiar with the daycare center, which has not been approved by the county. In fact, a traffic study has not even been submitted to the county yet for their review, as well as the Tacoma Park Middle School expansion. I don't believe that's received any approval yet. But we took that into consideration in our study, because it's close by, we know it'll impact this area a little bit, and people have been raising that as a question. In addition to that, we looked at a development at sixty-four thirteen Orchard Avenue, which was a four-thousand-square-foot warehouse building that the county gave us. At sixty-four fifty New Hampshire Avenue, we had a, they have a mixed-use building, part retail, part office, and that's approximately five thousand square feet there. And then there's a site called Gilbert and West, and that has received approval. And that's a building that's going to contain about thirteen thousand square feet of retail space, five hundred and forty square feet of office, and a seven thousand square foot restaurant. So we projected traffic for all of them and assigned them to the road network based on existing traffic patterns. And they are all included in the numbers that we have.
Do you want me to go through the signal phasing from the earlier presentations, just the, it's...
We haven't changed it, it's the same.
Okay, go through just quickly to remind people, it's been a while.
One thing it changed from last time is we've, we addressed the, let me get through here. So one of the issues before was, how do we get into the existing co-op lot from the north? So we didn't want to have southbound traffic make a right and then actually cross into the co-op. So we looked at reverse-flowing the traffic, where they would enter in from Sycamore and actually exit out onto Ethan Allen or the relocated intersection. Since then, Glenn and I have had a few meetings on this. We believe that it could be possible, once we meet with the state and the county, that we close off the Ethan Allen access altogether, and have an entrance just off of Sycamore and an exit off of Southern Sycamore. And what that does is it brings cars in and out off of Sycamore, the county road, and it relieves the issues of how traffic will get in and out of the existing co-op parking lot. So I just wanted to point that out. It's been a recent development in our office. And that's basically it from, again, I have the earlier study, which was many, many pages. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great. How about we go through the other traffic study, and then we'll bring you all up and ask questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
My name is Anurban Das, I'm a senior project engineer at Immorton Thompson Associates. And we've been hired by the city essentially to look at these intersections and propose alternatives to how to improve traffic flow in the region. This has been going on for a while. We did a few studies for District Three. We have an open contract with them, and we did a study in 2015. And at that time, SHA had a few alternatives which they liked. And then we redid some configuration, and we again submitted the study in 2016. At that time, obviously, Tacoma Junction development was not taken into consideration, obviously. But right now, when we did it, we obviously took the traffic group's numbers into consideration, some of the background trips, obviously, that they mentioned in detail. And obviously, now with the new signal timings, we redid our analysis. And some of the comments that we received, based on the previous presentation, we tried to address here specifically, we've been told to provide a recommendation. Last time, we sort of like kept it open-ended, and we just gave you the different alternatives, but we were told to give a, like a pros and cons, and basically say, hey, this is what we recommend. So we sort of tried to reach at that point. And the additional task that we were asked to do was about the cut-through traffic, so I'll go into a little bit more details about that. We were given six tasks. Obviously, the task one was a level of traffic, cut-through traffic, and I'll go into details about that. We were asked to do an intersection capacity analysis based on the critical lane volume. Nothing changed there, based on the last time, so I'll skip through that. And obviously, I'll go through the previous intersection design concepts that we did with SHA. And obviously, then I'll go into the details about our task four, which is with the updated signal timings and everything. And based on our bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements and the semi-tractor dealer access, nothing changed there. But I'll, we were asked to look into the box trucks issue, and I'll mention that as I keep going. So the residential cut-through that we looked, and the numbers from eastbound, ten, and the numbers going westbound were four, which sort of looked low. So we were asked to basically provide turning movement counts for all the intersections, which we did. So we have video accounts, and we processed those video accounts, and essentially, this is what we got. So the big thing that you want to see here is, obviously, the big number that's entering here, and then, you know, traffic, essentially, what we see is they are going into the neighboring roads. So if you see Poplar Avenue, there's a big number of traffic which is coming out, essentially, people coming out from the neighborhoods. Whoever, so Poplar is closer towards getting to four-ten-one-ninety-five. So we think that that's where people are getting to, whoever wants to go continue east, are essentially coming out through Poplar, making a turn at Sycamore, and then getting to four-ten-one-ninety-five. Similarly, if we go towards Pine, it has a high traffic volume, which is, you know, going northbound left, and then essentially, they continue along Columbia and then reach Philadelphia Avenue, four-ten. One interesting thing that we did notice was the traffic that's on Sycamore around thirty-six, and then another traffic that's on thirty-seven. So this is just one days of thirteen-hour counts. Obviously, it will vary if we do different days. But we have seen that traffic essentially comes up Sycamore, they will not go to four-ten-one-ninety-five, they will essentially make a turn at Columbia. They will continue along Columbia, for whoever wants to go continue west, they will make a northbound left turn at the Philadelphia Avenue, one-ninety-five. So is that something that you want to add to cut-through traffic? But, so, and a very similar pattern happens the other way. So we found like thirty-six vehicles which are making a turn here, and similarly, during the entire day, around thirty-seven vehicles which are making the turn the other way. So these are the vehicles which go down Sycamore, but instead of going along one, you know, four-ten-one-ninety-five, Grand, and then making a right turn at Sycamore, they essentially make the turn at Columbia. Assuming that's primarily to avoid all the congestion on Grand to four-ten. So that's, that's an added...
That's my route. I can tell you right now.
So you are one of the person who's... So, right, so that's, so I think that's basically what the complaint was, that, you know, people are saying, hey, I know everybody's on Columbia saying, hey, I see a lot of traffic. So when you're saying cut-through, that number doesn't seem to match. But then, that's basically the reason, is because people, even though they want to continue towards the east, they will still take the easier intersection towards the south, and then just continue east. And it's the other way going west. So that's a, that's a big revelation, and we put that in our report, and the figure is also on there. The critical lane volume analysis, we were asked to do four of them. It doesn't, this is a very simple SHA method, which only Maryland uses. It's just based on the lane capacity and the volume, it doesn't take into consideration signal timings. So we were asked to analyze four intersections, and based on the CLVs, they sort of work. But then, that's a very, it's a very crude way of doing calculations. It's not, it doesn't take into consideration any signal timings or pedestrian phasing or anything of that sort. So these were the two, these were the intersection design concepts that were studied last time. In 2015, we did a study, and at that point, that was the first time where we studied the realignment of MD-one-ninety-five. And I think one of the, one of the thing that came out was, you know, if Sycamore Avenue is close to traffic and was detoured into the neighboring roads, then it sort of was one of the recommended alternatives that came out, and SHA sort of favored that. If it's, it was either Sycamore being closed, or Sycamore and Grand being closed, or Grand being closed, those were sort of the different alternatives that we were looking at. City sort of got involved, and I know Montgomery County had a few comments, and then based on that, we did another study in 2016. And again, some very similar alternatives came up, and again, it was sort of, the recommended option was the Sycamore Avenue being closed to traffic. And I think those traffic reports are available to us, or it's available to the district, if you want, I'm guessing you have them too. So we looked at four different alternatives, obviously. So our first option was, you know, nothing happens at the intersection, we keep everything as is, other than we are closing Grant Avenue. So when we're closing Grant Avenue, essentially, what happens here is, oh, let me see, so we're closing off Grant Avenue, so we're prohibiting access into Grant Avenue. So what we are suggesting is detouring traffic, whoever wants to enter Grant Avenue from, coming eastbound along four-ten, they detour, make a left at Philadelphia Avenue, go up north, and then access Grant Avenue from one of the neighboring streets up north. Coming westbound, we are detouring the traffic, making a right onto Carroll Avenue, and going north, and then accessing Grant Avenue from one of the neighborhood roads. What essentially it does is, the biggest thing is it stops the access of making left turns here, and it basically helps the flow of traffic, because when you're trying to allow left turns going into Grand, essentially, the through traffic has to stop, and there's heavy volume coming down from Carroll Avenue. And those volumes have to stop based on the signal timings. If we close Grant Avenue, then that sort of helps with the flow, at least, at least along this, this region. Obviously, what it does is it's going to increase your traffic on the neighboring roads. So it's going to obviously increase your left turn volume here, it's going to increase your right turn volume here. So we were asked to like list some pros and cons. Obviously, the biggest pro is there's no geometric change. So that's the biggest one. It's the least costly option, and because it doesn't affect utilities, it doesn't affect your right-of-way, you're basically looking at how the intersections are right now. Obviously, the drawback is that it's going to detour traffic to neighboring roads, whoever wants to access Grant Avenue, guessing is not going to be very happy about it. It's going to increase a little bit of travel time. It's not much, but at least it's going to increase a little bit of travel time. When we go to option two, A, this is basically where we realign Carroll Avenue with Sycamore. So obviously, the biggest pro is that it creates a traditional four-legged intersection. One thing that we were looking at, obviously, one of them was the slip ramps that we know Traffic Group studied, and it's, I mean, there's no, there's no right or wrong here. It's essentially, you know, the way you want to prefer to see it. The reason why we kept it a hard right was because, essentially, this is a heavy flow movement. If you bring people down to this intersection, make them, make a hard right, the delay is going to increase, but then it sort of increases pedestrian safety, because you are sort of asking people, because then people are going to be protected making this crossing. The other big thing is, we are proposing that you eliminate this crosswalk, and then essentially, everybody crosses here. And then, what it, what it does is, the bigger advantage is, pedestrians are only crossing one-ninety-five here. They can, if they want to continue left, then they can just continue walking along Grant Avenue, and the only time they have to cross is again at Grant Avenue here, instead of making two crosses, once here and then again at Grant Avenue. If we do this realignment, obviously, the space will be available. We were asked to do a quick, like, square footage consideration. So the approximate around ninety-four hundred square footage of green space will be available, and free to do whatever you want there. And we have essentially managed to keep the number of on-street metered parking the same. I know it was a big issue, you want to keep that, so we have still managed to keep that. Obviously, the biggest drawback is, it's going to obviously involve significant geometric changes. It's going to be a little costly, it's going to impact your right-of-way, especially to the northwest quadrant here. And that was one thing that we were asked to look at. Based on the GIs parcel data, that northwest quadrant is around six thousand seventy-two square feet, and the estimated impacts will be around thirty-three hundred, so around half of the right-of-way is going to be impacted. Obviously, along with that comes, we really don't know what the, what the impact will be to the utilities underground, so obviously, we have to look into that if it comes to that stage. I mean, we can obtain those data, but obviously, that needs to go into more detail. And I think if you do a cost analysis, I think those things basically come into account if you do that. But that is, that's, but that's the reason, but the reason why we looked into this is, obviously, if you're making a hard right, then you're, you know, slowing down traffic. If the, if the preference is, you know, pedestrian safety, obviously, people crossing after shopping at the co-op, and then if you have the new Tacoma Junction, then that's one, that's one option that you, that, you know, we can, we can recommend. Sure.
Can you just say that again, about the right-of-way, the thirty-two or three-hundred?
Sure.
I wasn't completely clear exactly what parcel you were talking about.
Sure. So the parcel that I'm talking about is right here, so the northwest quadrant. So this parcel is around like six thousand, whatever square feet that is, and if you're bringing this down like this, this parcel, like more than half of it would be impacted. So that's the right-of-way...
Okay, half of it, not all of it.
Right. That has to be acquired, and obviously, the geometric, you know, cost of moving it would be considered.
And then on the other side?
You're going to get the extra green space.
Thank you.
Can I clarify on that, though? I believe that you're referring to there with the, the impact on the, not on the property that is currently BY Morrison Park, but the residential property there, am I wrong?
Yes, no.
It's the residential property?
Yes.
Okay.
The residential property, that's on the northwest quadrant.
The impact, you're referring to the resident, the house, the residential property that is six thousand square feet?
Yes.
Would be impacted by three thousand square feet?
Yes.
Correct?
I mean, yeah, so basically, if that lot gets impacted, then it completely gets impacted. So basically, that, that parcel will have to be acquired. So that right-of-way will have to be acquired in order to do this.
So one of my questions, and I was going to wait to ask this, but I'll ask it now since we're talking about this, is my impression from our conversations with the traffic group was that your plan did not impact that property as significantly. Is that correct?
Anurban, are you, the, the city owns the park itself. So you're talking about the first residential property?
First residential, like...
So the, the traffic group design has a bit of a bend to it that aligns the southbound movement more at an angle, so we can get the bus stop in and the required sidewalk and landscaping. My design, and again, these details will be worked out once we get to a state and county level, but my design, as in our exhibits, holds that existing fence line and does not impact the residential community. And that may be because our right-turn lane is over along the existing business side, but that, you know, it's a different plan, for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. I mean, I mean, these things obviously can be worked more in detail. I mean, this is just, hey, we realigned it, this is what's going to happen, sort of thing. Obviously, if you want to keep the right-of-way, obviously, we can work to, you know, move it along the right-of-way, keep it, I mean, you know, keep it towards the edge of the right-of-way to the minimum impact, obviously, we can do all that stuff. So this is, this is just to say, hey, if you bring it directly to a, to a T, bring it to a, you know, to a cross-intersection, that's basically the bigger impact that you're going to have. Obviously, if...
Anurban, give it. One thing that MTA and the state highway administration has indicated is that they do not like bus turn-in bays. So the bus turn-in bay typically state will not want that. So that, that impact on the southeast corner would, may not get approved, so just...
So I would be interested, and I know this, this is something that would be further down the line, but I would be interested in whether this sort of plan would be possible without the impact to the residential property.
Sure, I mean, we can look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I would be interested in that.
Sure. So, obviously, taking, so, the option two B, which we did, the, the biggest change, obviously, where we had is, in option two B, what we essentially did is we are restricting left turns from eastbound, from Carroll Avenue into, into, into Grant Avenue. So, this is the bigger issue that happens here is because, because we're restricting left turns here and on this intersection here, it's, it will be a signalized intersection. Restricting left turns here, obviously, we can detour the same way. Grant Avenue traffic can make a left turn here and then others can, you know, make a right turn here. The biggest thing that happens here is essentially, you can take away the signalized intersection here. So, that's, that's the bigger impact that we have. It essentially creates a four, traditional four-legged intersection and it reduces the number of signalized intersections from three to two. So, that, that essentially will help with your delay, because people have to stop less at, at signals. And this too, still keeps the number of on-street metered parking the same. Obviously, again, the number of, obviously, the geometric changes would impact the existing right of way and the relocation of utilities. But the, the biggest thing that it does is essentially, it takes away, it takes away a signalized intersection here and it just, and basically, you have one signalized intersection at this point and one intersection at Philadelphia Avenue. What it, what it basically helps with is, again, if you, we would propose that you take away this crosswalk again and then basically allow everyone. What we are looking into and we will obviously, since, since we submit a draft report, obviously, we have the two things that we're looking at. I took your comment about how the, how we can minimize the impact to the right of way. So, obviously, I'm going to look into that. And we're going to realign this crosswalk in a certain way so that it doesn't basically affect the, the exit right now. I mean, right now, it sort of just moves the crosswalk right now and it puts it on the exit, but we are sort of looking into it right now to how to basically realign it, basically in a skewed way, so that it doesn't go with the existing driveway right now. But, that's, that was, so, our preferred alternative, obviously, we, we, we looked into these two, we sort of say two B because essentially, it reduces your signalized intersections from three to two. It basically reduces the delay along this stretch and that's basically what you're looking for. All our analysis have been done based on the all-red pedestrian phase, so that's still going to exist. So, obviously, when you have the all-red phase, you know, everybody can make, make that, make their crossings here and then, I think the 10-second crossing, I think the county is looking to change it again to 28, but then, obviously, that, the all-red pedestrian phase will remain. One of the questions that we got was, what if we take away the all-red phase? Obviously, if you take away the all-red phase, it's going to give more green time to the vehicles. It's going to definitely reduce queues, it's going to definitely reduce your delays. So, obviously, again, it comes to a preference standpoint. I mean, you want to strike a balance between safety and you want, and you want to keep the vehicle a delay to a minimum. So, if you want to keep the pedestrian all-red phase, obviously, you, we optimize the signal timings, the county has to look into it. I'm guessing, obviously, just, just the way they've been doing it right now, if you, if you realign it, obviously, one of the questions that we had was, okay, what happens after that is, yeah, it's the similar way, you, you have to fine-tune the signal timings after that. I mean, I'm pretty sure the county is going to follow it through peak hours for the next few weeks and look into it, you know, when school is open, school not open and all that stuff. And they're going to fine-tune the signal timings and they're going to make it work the best way it's possible. So, so that's, that's one thing, that's, that's a process that has to go through anyway if there's a change to, to this realignment.
Kent, while we're on the subject of crosswalks, tell us, please, you're thinking about taking, if you're keeping an all-red anyway on two B and you're eliminating the light and the left turns on Grant, tell, tell us why you've, that you prefer to take out that Grant Avenue crosswalk. Put another way, can you look at what is the impact of keeping that crosswalk?
Well.
Or just tell us generally?
Sure. I mean, it's essentially, if we keep the crosswalk, then you basically go into what we had at, had at option two A, where we are essentially, I mean, if you want to keep that crosswalk, then you need vehicles to stop there. So, obviously, that would mean, do you, if you want to do like a pedestrian yield?
So, then they might as well make a left turn.
Might as well make a left turn and you allow them to do it, so. So, that was the, the whole purpose of not allowing the left turns, but so that you could take the, take the signal away.
So, if you take the signal away and you only have a crosswalk signal, that's not something you can do? That make, you could do it, but it doesn't make sense?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, yeah, that's the whole, I mean, yeah, I mean, or you can put in like a yield to pedestrian sign, but then, then you're, 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 you're allowing people to cross there and considering the amount of heavy pedestrian traffic, that would basically kill the purpose of doing it in the first place. So, I mean, unless and until somebody has really big problems about walking a little bit to the east, I don't think it should be a big problem, but, I mean, yes, I mean, that's the whole.
Well, they get put in for a reason, so.
Right, yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, I completely understand. But then if you want to keep the crosswalk there, then you might as well keep the signal there. That's, that was basically the idea. And then, our third alternative, we basically just looked at it, obviously, it was one of the, one of the designs that was, we were asked to look at. That, this sort of follows a little bit with what Traffic Group did with the, with the slip ramp. Obviously, their stuff, their design is this coming down here and then this is a signal here. What we were asked to look at is obviously, keeping this right turn free flow and then allowing this traffic to essentially, so basically, nobody's allowed to go through. Everybody has to essentially come up to north here and then make a left, because this becomes a signal here. So, this signal goes away, this essentially just signal just moves to the north and keep this free flow. And we're proposing again, no lefts here and then these lefts essentially go here, make a right and then keep going through. Traffic that's allowed to go east, you can still go east and we are proposing to keep an yield here, which is, would be yield to pedestrians. We are updating this, this plan right now. We're essentially going to move this crosswalk beyond the stop bar, but that's something that I will submit in the final report. But, this is, this is something which we looked at, but obviously, it's not a preferred alternative. Essentially, again, brings up a very funky design and that's something that you're trying to get away from. Right now, you have a skewed intersection anyway, this basically keeps a skewed intersection and then brings, it essentially brings the problem that was down here essentially to the top with more bigger problems, because you're essentially taking away this movement and you're bringing everybody to the north. And then the other way also, when you're trying to go west, you're essentially stopping that movement and making everybody go to the spur. So, this was one option that we looked at, but it's, it's, obviously, it's not recommended. Though obviously, the, again, the benefit of this is, you know, you can, you can reduce your number of signalized intersections from three to two, again, with the same way. Obviously, if you want to keep this crosswalk, then it sort of kills the purpose and that's basically where we're going at, is if you want to keep the crosswalk, then this, this, this option is essentially becomes invalid, it doesn't make sense. So, so we, we do not recommend this, we just basically looked into it as one of the options that we wanted to look at. Pedestrians and bicycle safety, we submitted our plans based on it, our sharrows use, you know, bikes may use full lanes sort of signing that we proposed alongside walks. There's, there's very little, there's very little right of way to essentially allow for separate bike paths. Where the lanes are wide, we basically did put sharrows and that's one thing that we recommend. And where there are not, we basically recommend putting in signs where saying, you know, bikes may use full lane. Those signs are basically alert drivers, saying that, hey, there will be bicyclists on this road, you know, be careful and they're allowed to use the same road. So, these are just, you know, proposed plans that we, that we sent to you based on, to, you know, improve bicycle and pedestrian safety in the region. Truck accessibility, we talked about this in great detail last time. Obviously, we looked at the WB 40s. I discussed with Traffic Group, they said that most of the traffic that comes into Tacoma Park, the, the trucks are WB 67s, which are even bigger, so there's absolutely no way they will be able to make a turn onto Sycamore and go into Columbia Avenue. The other thing that we were asked to look at, you know, if box trucks and other FedEx trucks sort of thing, if they can make, I mean, obviously, they can make the turn, but then the, always the bigger issue is, you know, when you are asking them to stop on Sycamore or Columbia and make the delivery. The problem is, if you're stopping, these are only two-lane roads. So, if you are stopping and making a delivery even for like 15 minutes or 20 minutes, you're essentially blocking one lane. So, what needs to happen is if, if a truck stops here, then nobody can go through, there's only one lane here, something like a flagging operation will need to happen so that somebody who's, you know, from, somebody who's standing here allows, allows, you know, traffic to go like this and then, you know, stops, stops northbound traffic and then sort of allows northbound traffic to go. Similarly, even on Columbia, I mean, even if box trucks can make the turn and if you're stopping and making the delivery, it's the same problem. And I don't think the neighborhood people would obviously like that too. So, we do not recommend, obviously, truck stops and deliveries on Sycamore and Columbia Avenue. So, that was basically our recommendation. Even though they can make the turns, especially the box trucks can make the turns, they, we do not recommend them actually stopping and making the deliveries because of the flagging operation that needs to happen and safety issues, so. But I, obviously, the one thing that I got was, obviously, we'll look into the, the right of way impact, how to minimize it and obviously, we can, we can submit our plans accordingly based on that. But even if we do that, I don't think that sort of changes the traffic analysis, will still be a traditional four-legged intersection. It will essentially just skew the intersection a little bit, just bring it, bring it, bring it down in a certain way so that it minimizes the right of way impacted the northeast quadrant. So, that's, that's it from my, my end.
Perfect. Thank you.
I just wonder if I could ask the Traffic Group back up for a second? One of the questions that I've had for some time and it was just raised by the gentleman from AMT, really has to do with the idea of the crosswalk near Grant or whatever, that, that segment. And on your configurations, I don't think you have any crosswalk plan between the Tacoma Junction intersection and the Philadelphia intersection, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you put one in, what impacts would happen?
That's adding the delay that you're talking about.
Oh, okay. The, the county is in the process and in discussions with them, but we just got an email from them today. What the county is looking to do is to use the crosswalk on the west side of the intersection to cross Carroll Avenue to get over to Philadelphia Avenue. To put it on the east side of the intersection would create a problem because of that right turn volume that is so high. And if you have pedestrians going across that approach, you would have to constantly stop that right turning traffic that wants to go north on Philadelphia. So, when you have a movement like that, you try to put the pedestrian movement on the other side of the intersection, because they could cross on that side while that right turn movement continues.
Right, but I thought we had an all-red now, again, back at that intersection.
There is a 10-second all-red that, that they put in when they re-timed it. They are, based on comments here a couple of weeks ago, they, they're trying, they're going to increase that to 28 seconds.
Yeah, I think they've done that, actually. I mean, I think that's been the, I mean, I, I don't think that came from us, I think that came from some residents, actually, and so.
According to, to Chris Romain from Montgomery County, the technician out here, they have not put the 28 seconds and they're going to wait until schools open and that way, they can get a better understanding of what's going on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess, again, the, the question that I have is that if there's, if there ends up being an all-red, does it allow for a crosswalk to be somewhere east of Philadelphia? Because to me, you know, I, I recognize we're trying to balance lots of interests, but it is, seems to be a long distance between ways to cross Carroll Avenue in that segment.
This would be a very difficult stretch of roadway to try to put in, really what you're referring to is a mid-block crosswalk. You wouldn't want to put a signalized crosswalk in between these two intersections, because that would really mess up the storage area and things of that nature. But this, this area being congested or heavily traveled, isn't a good place to put a mid-block crosswalk, because even though the pedestrian has the right of way, once he steps foot in that crosswalk, then that means everybody has to stop to allow him to cross the street. So, it creates the same effect as if it was a signalized intersection. So, it's always best to cross the pedestrians at corners of signalized intersections as opposed to mid-block.
Great. So, I just, I'm going to start off, asking a couple of questions. Some of these we had sent you before, a resident who couldn't be here this evening has sent us a number of questions, but I guess the first question I want to ask goes back to where you started. You said with the background traffic that you've looked at.
Yes.
Basically, this is going, that was already planned, is going to cause this intersection to fail.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So, what, all right, so we have that. Then on top of it, what the development that we are now discussing at the lot at Tacoma Junction, what does that add to it specifically?
Obviously, we're going to add more traffic to the road network and therefore, further degrade the level of service.
But I guess the question we have is how much are we, how much traffic are we actually adding with this project?
You have the delay, the, yeah, it's the, you've got the trips showing, like the second or third exhibit. Okay, there you go, okay. During the, during the morning peak hour, we would have 47 trips coming to the facility and about 12 leaving, so 59 trips during the morning peak hour. In the evening, we would have roughly 70 trips coming to the facility and 94 leaving, or 164 total. So, that would be the additional number of cars that would be added to the road network.
For what we're talking, what we've been discussing?
For that hour period, yes.
Okay. And I guess another question, and this was question five on the ones that we sent you earlier today, and this was another question I've gotten by, from a couple of residents, is that the study assumes standard shopping center usage on the first floor without a restaurant, but we've been talking about a restaurant on the first floor, so I think we're all trying to figure out what, what the impact of that will be and why you used a model without a restaurant when we've been talking about a restaurant.
Okay. Normally, when we do a, a study, we look at general land uses, because at the time, we really don't know what the specific land uses may end up being, because restaurants are allowed in a, in an area that's zoned for, for retail. But, so, when we did our study, we looked at the total number, square footage of the retail space. Since we received the questions, we have gone back and done a little bit more analysis and, and what it shows that if we, I, I think it was depicted as a, a white tablecloth type restaurant, which we would call a quality restaurant, and a cafe, which is a high turnover restaurant. And if we substituted those two restaurants for straight retail space, it would result in an increase of 18 cars in the morning and 15 cars in the evening. So, it, it's not a, a major increase in the traffic, you know, less than one car every two minutes or whatever. And, and that's when you're looking at just vehicles, being in an area like this, you know, a lot of the patrons may be walking there from the office building and won't be driving their cars, so it could be less than that. But the difference between the two, if we made that comparison, would be very little. It'd be about 15 cars per hour or something like that.
But thank you for doing it, because it was on my mind also.
Sorry. So, yeah.
Counselor Cross, no, go ahead. Before we lose our train of thought on this, I do want to just go back. So, you're showing us here the, the number of cars in and out in the AM and the PM for this development. Are those, those are the numbers, but what is the impact of that traffic on the queuing and the delay times? Is that figured into the tables that you were showing on the slide that I think is a few after these?
Yes, we, we had tables that showed the difference in the delay between the background and the total traffic conditions. And then we also had one that showed the queuing differences between the two.
So, is, in that background, that's not just the, the other four or five developments you looked at, that includes the NDC traffic as well?
No, we are not part of background. Background is before we add our. Background is before we add our, our site on there. So the intersection's gonna be failing even without our development, as I had said. But then you go back and then you add on the impact of our development and redo the analysis.
Uh, this exhibit shows in the AM peak, it shows basically about twenty-five feet of queuing coming out of the garage. And then in the evening, because you have a heavy traffic coming from the west trying to get to the north and east, you have a hundred and thirty-eight feet of queuing trying to get out of the garage. So the, the queuing analysis and the delay takes in consideration the exit traffic.
Could you explain that again? Because you just lost me with...
Sure. So we're looking at the PM...
Yes.
After the timing changes with the relocated intersection. So that blue line coming out of the garage shows cars queued up...
Oh, okay.
Back to about that point, a hundred and thirty-eight feet.
So you mean, you mean within the develop, okay.
Correct. And that's, that's during the worst PM peak period. Yes. And then, like I said, in the AM, it's just basically one car length. It's about twenty-five feet.
So just to be sure, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm totally understanding this. So in the columns here, existing traffic is what we have right now.
Correct.
Background traffic is with the developments, but not the NDC development.
Correct.
Total traffic is with the NDC development, background and existing?
Yes.
Okay. And then total traffic with improvements?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Great. All right, why don't we just, we could start at the top if you want, because I think you have the questions and...
We have the list here.
We have the list. Um, I think the first question was, um, and this also includes, um, the gentleman from AMT. And I know you've all have talked about this a little bit, but the differences between the, um, the two different intersection reconfigurations, are there other things you want to speak to regarding the differences, um, to the two recommendations?
Okay. The, the major differ, basically, they agree with the same concept that we do, to make that a four-legged intersection. The only, the major differences between what we were recommending and what they're recommending is that they're showing what I think was referred to as the hot right. So that when you came southbound on Carroll, you could go left, straight through, or make a right turn from there. What we're recommending is that you, you do the same alignment, but only the left turns and threes go down to the intersection at Carroll, at Ethan Allen and go through there. The right turns, we would essentially leave them where they are today. And there's multiple reasons for doing that. And it leads to another one of your questions in here, is what impact is that going to have on the businesses in the area? And by leaving that right turn lane where it's at today, our parking stays, one, right in front of the stores. The traffic still goes by the stores, so it would have the least impact on all those businesses along that stretch there as opposed to having to walk down from the intersection. The other thing that it does, and this has always been a, a hot topic, is the exclusive PED phase crossing Carroll and the fifty-five seconds or whatever it is they use today. By moving the right turn over to the storefronts and the phasing that we have, we can provide a protective PED movement from the island over to the corner that the co-op's on while traffic's still moving through that intersection. Because no cars would be going southbound on Carroll and making a right turn at that intersection. So we can be using that time to not only move cars through the intersections, but also pedestrians rather than having them stay there. So it has a benefit, our concept has the benefit for the pedestrians and the vehicles because it keeps cars moving for a longer period of time than if we had the exclusive all-red phase there. So those are the two major differences between the, the schemes. The right-of-way needs to be, again, th- these are concepts, they need to be more fine-tuned. But, um, we believe the right-of-way would only affect the park property and not the residential property right behind the park.
And do you, as part, as part of this, can you, are you able, not right now, but are you able to make the same kind of comparison of losing, uh, square footage in the park and adding square footage in the triangle?
Certainly, when we get to the stage where we start to design this and get everything up to standards and everything, we could make that determination.
Well, would you say it's roughly equal? Would you say it's half, half gained back? Would you, you don't have to say it the second, but could we get some order, some, some sense of, uh, if we, i- i- is the triangle gonna be about the same size as the park or is it gonna be half of it or a quarter of it?
We can confirm that and get you that information.
Thank you.
Um, one, one thing I wanted to point out is, um, at the final stage, you could have some variation of this where if you wanted to increase the green space in front of the businesses, you could bring this right turn slightly over and still have our pedestrian phase that's dedicated strictly to pedestrians. So it could be adjusted.
And I don't know if you all can compare, but does one of the options that we're just looking at now, and I understand they're just concepts, um, does, is one, um, provide a longer crossing time for pedestrians versus the other?
Uh, AMT's intersection assumes an all-red phase.
Right.
And ours just assumes a dedicated phase while the southbound Carroll movements are flowing.
So it would reduce the delay to the vehicles because they would be able to move while our pedestrians are crossing.
I, I think, um, before, one of the, one of the things, points that was made, though, was the actual amount of kind of walking time and waiting time would still be less than it currently is under this scheme. Is that correct?
Correct. So, so today, if you're crossing, let me get to the existing intersection. So if you're on the northern side near Grant or you're on the south side, uh, if you do not push the push button, the all-red phase does not come up. So if you do push the push button, what happens is you have to wait for that entire traffic signal cycle to get to the point where it's gonna bring you the all-red. And that time may be less than if you were just crossing at the new intersection with the, with the crosswalk phase that comes up with the southbound movement. Because the southbound Carroll movement is a, a, a very large movement in the morning when, when the children are crossing or when the crossing guards are there. So when southbound's flowing and that protected phase is protected and no other cars are in that area, that could be a third of the cycle length that you have. So just walking that little bit, I'd say a little bit distance, but you'll have more time to cross than waiting a full hundred and eighty seconds as you do today.
Counselor Kovar, you have a question?
Yeah, just one question. So on the triangle island, I think you just said something about this, but, you know, that's whatever shape you kind of want it to be to make it work. Is there anything gained by making that a little smaller so you can have more travel room? Or is it because of what they're continuing on to? They really just need to stay those widths? Since you can't go left when you're going southbound on Carol, for example. Or right, I mean, yeah.
Well, we, we look, one of the designs we looked at was having a double right. So in the morning, we could turn, this arrow's really hard to define on the screen. So if we had a, if we had two lanes turning right in the morning, which would be really good for morning traffic, which is really heavy making a right turn. But what happens is those two lanes turning cannot sort themselves out before they get to this intersection. So the, the right lane has to go to Philadelphia and the, and the left lane needs to go straight. So we, we can, um, shift it in order to gain more green space in front of the businesses, but really adding an additional lane doesn't, doesn't get us anything.
Because then it'd be going like this.
Yes, you, you'll have a weaving issue.
And you couldn't really fix that by signage back at that intersection, right? Because they wouldn't understand what you were telling them to do, yeah? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions about what we're calling the island right now before we move on?
I, I do have one question. How large could you, or how small could you make that island in, if most, most of it was moved in front of the businesses, how small could you make it and still make it be feasible?
Well, again, the main, the main item on this right turn lane is that it doesn't conflict with this pedestrian crossing. So technically, it could come very close to this, but we have set up this area here for a, a, a dedicated bus slot. So today, that bus that sits adjacent to the park, uh, holds up all westbound traffic. So, but this design, if the bus goes into this slot, he's not stuck in a, like a dedicated bus bay and he can just proceed westbound. So it could be very close to the crosswalk.
Yeah, it could be. The state standard for the minimum size of an island is seventy-five square feet. And, and that's pretty small when you see seventy-five square feet. And if you put that at this intersection, I mean, there is a lot of pedestrian activity in this area. So you'd like to keep that island as big as you can to provide a bigger refuge area for the pedestrians to stand and give them some clearance from the cars going by too. I mean, we could go down as far as seventy-five square feet, but we certainly would not recommend that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you want to go to that, down that small, but I also would like to keep more of that space as usable space, not just this place where people stand for a few minutes before they cross the street. Related to the bus stop, what I was envisioning was, I wondered whether, if you did that, um, and it's gonna be kind of hard for me to explain, but if you moved that space in front of the, the island space in front of the businesses and you had a smaller island, could you combine the two bus stops, the one from Carroll Avenue, southbound, with the one from four-ten, westbound? In that essentially a slightly more westbound bus bay? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I'm having a diff, having a difficult time understanding what you're...
So if, if that island essentially, if you removed the right turn lane, um, and, and moved it closer to the, um, intersection...
Right.
Um, could you then create a, a bus stop that is both for the buses turning right from Carroll Avenue and for the buses going straight on Ethan Allen?
In all likelihood, again, that would be a design feature, but the difficulty would be that we had to keep a minimum radius if we moved that lane over. We'd have to have a mini, a minimum radius, and especially when you have buses in the area, that would allow that bus to turn and get parallel with the westbound curb, curb. So I think it'd be very difficult from a design standpoint to do that, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Great.
Do you have more questions?
Yeah, I think you, so, um, I can't remember. So, um, the next question, um, was, uh, the yield condition for eastbound Ethan Allen traffic. I think that was the AMT design, um, in front of the co-op parking lot. Um, and I know you were, yeah, and you're not reg, no, no. Okay, we can skip that then. Um, and I know we talked about this, but you talked about it before, but I just want to, um, the traffic come, the cars coming in and out of the parking lot and you have the, the queuing line there, but I just, I don't think you, um, talked about the, the delay either, how, how much potentially people would be backed up in, in the site coming out of that. Is there any issues there?
You're talking about the, coming out of the garage from Tacoma Junction?
The twenty-five and one thirty-eight.
He did, he got that?
It would be twenty-five feet, I believe he said, during the morning peak hour and a hundred and thirty-eight feet in the evening peak.
And if you just divide it by twenty-five, you'll, you'll come up with the number of cars is six cars in the evening.
Terrific. Yeah, just to ask one question about all of this conversation. What are you assuming about Grant Avenue here? No left-hand turns, yes left-hand turns, open, closed? Just remind us what your assumption is.
We're keeping Grant Street open and not restricting any turns. There, we're showing double yellow, but I think there's double yellow today. It, having a no-left turn would help, but it's not shown on our concept.
Okay, so you don't have that as an assumption right now? Okay, thank you.
That would make it much more difficult for me to get my mother-in-law's house, I'm just saying. So...
We'll, we'll work on that part then, yes.
Um, the other question, um, that has come up, um, that people have talked about, I don't know if you have an opinion on this, but is induced demand, you know, with ways and other things? And you may call upon your other knowledge of other projects you're working on, um, to a, address this. But even if we were to make all these wonderful changes here and get everything looking good, what are the chances it would stay that way for us?
Well, I can guarantee you it won't stay that way forever. Um, when I, when I saw that question, I thought, now, how in the world do we answer that? Um, it's a difficult question, but obviously, when something like this happens, you make improvements, you try to build in as much capacity as you can. Um, you know, the, the question was, well, once you make the improvements and you make the intersection operate better, then how much more traffic is gonna be attracted to that intersection? And I can stand here honestly and tell you, I have no idea. Um, that's not something that we know. We just know it will create capacity. And would a few people decide to go that way in the future because traffic's smoother through there? I'm sure they will. But I don't believe it would be a significant amount of traffic that would cause the intersection to degrade. But over a period of time, traffic's gonna grow just naturally. And I think that the comment was, in a week, a year, five years, we, we don't know how long that's gonna be. We have no idea unless the development was right next door and we could judge that. But normally, we, in this case, the improvement that we're recommending, just so you know, with the eighty-second standard that the county requires, at total build-out with the improvements, our delay is thirty seconds. So we're not even using up half of the...
Oh, you buried the lead.
We've got plenty of room for people to come to the intersection if they want to. We're not using half, even half, of the capacity of that intersection.
I didn't know if AMT wanted this comment.
I mean, we sort of, uh, we sort of discussed, we were discussing the questions when we were sitting here. I mean, that was essentially what we were talking to. I mean, obviously, you know, just like what was happening right now, I mean, once, you know, this, if these improvements come in, I mean, obviously, the county will still have to go out there and, you know, fine tune the signal timing, so they're gonna look at traffic. Eventually, obviously, if, if, but we cannot obviously make an engineering judgment as to, you know, how much traffic will be attracted with the attraction. So it's, it's an ongoing process. Obviously, they're gonna fine tune it as they go, you know, looking at the next few weeks or months, looking at, you know, how traffic reacts to it and then, uh, adjust the signal timings.
Great. Councilwoman DeBala or Kovar, your lights are, are there questions?
Yeah, I, so you're talk, I, I'm assuming that we can send both of you, both of you, you know, some detailed questions or some specific number, we don't have to get into it with everybody here. But what I would like to hear you talk about, a little bit about is the buses going eastbound and also bike racks, not just bike lanes or bike access.
Right. The, um, in the earlier presentation, we talked about, there's a Capitol Bike share out front of the site. And we talked about potentially moving it into the green space, um, area.
Okay.
Um, and it could be along the sidewalk behind the bus, um, area for westbound. So the existing westbound bus stop would get relocated, again, to an indented bus bay westbound. Uh, the existing Tacoma Junction, you know, in front of the neck, adjacent to the bike share, that would get relocated, uh, to this fifty-foot area in front of the co-op, um, between the entrance and between the truck lane. And again, we are, we're possibly talking about, uh, having vehicles enter and exit off of Sycamore that could free up some additional sidewalk, uh, in front of the co-op area.
Any other, any other options about, um, the bi, the location of bike racks?
Um, it's my understanding, based on the frontage of the Tacoma Junction project, having as much community space as we can and, and I'm trying to get as much space for my truck deliveries. Uh, so we, we're trying to balance community space, truck lane and bus areas. If there's a better spot or if the city would like it in a different location, we can certainly consider that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. One of the other questions, going back to the island, was, and you may not know the answer to this question yet, but whether or not you were looking at this area being flat or sloping and the, yeah?
Glenn and I, uh, watched, um, evening peak hour operations this, this evening before we came over. And essentially, the area is somewhat flat from the existing road surface of southbound Carroll to the back of the existing park. So I don't see any reason why it couldn't be flat. But if there's some desire for water runoff and things, that, you know, it could certainly be designed to accommodate.
East to west, the island is pretty flat. It's from the, the northernmost tip of that island to the curb line up on, um, Ethan Allen, um, that you have a slight grade increase there. But it's not significant at all. I mean, it would be nothing that would deter people I mean, it would be nothing that would deter people from walking up there. There wouldn't, steps wouldn't be needed to change the grade. So overall, it, it's pretty flat and could be designed to even improve that.
Can you, yeah, I'm sorry, can, can AMT comment on the bike, the bike and access to? Missed that.
Yes.
Just, could you comment on the, on bike rack location in yours? I know that's a level of detail that, you're, you're thinking about the bigger picture, but, but did you have any views on that?
We essentially didn't look at the bike rack issue because obviously the loading dock base is, we're not, we're not looking into. One of the things that we obviously looked at is where we considered taking away the signal. One thing which I wanted to mention is, you know, if we take away the signal in a grand, that essentially helps that, that, you know, truck loading bay area, because I think one of the issues that SHA had was, you know, the truck loading bay area is very close to the stop bar and, you know, and where, you know, trucks are coming in and going out, it essentially is going to stop traffic flow. If you're essentially taking away that signal, it, it just creates a through traffic and it's, it basically helps that, helps this, this region right here. So that was one of the option reasons why we, you know, recommended option two B's, because it takes away the signal ground. But no, we didn't take a look at that bike rack.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Can we add just one?
Yeah, yeah.
One thing to that question? The, you know, the bike locations are, the, the two major ones, the share locations are in good locations because we have space. If you're talking about other bike racks for people just to park bikes as opposed to exchange them or anything, you know, there's a lot of flexibility in where they can, they can go. And at the same time, I can assure you that when we get to Park and Planning and we start looking at the Bicycle Might Master Plan and things like that, they will have plenty of suggestions for us where we can put our bike racks.
One reason that we were proposing it in the, the green spacer in the sidewalk area adjacent was that it's adjacent to three bus stops here on this side versus the one on the south side. So that's, that's the reasoning behind having it in that area.
Councilman Kostic, do you have some other questions you wanted to?
I do. Are you sure you're ready for that?
I think I'm ready, too.
Thank you. Okay, I apologize if these are scattered. A lot of my questions have been answered, but I do have a couple from residents and a couple of my own I wanted to follow up on. So looking at the, the CLV analysis, it seemed to me that the analysis that you did said that it, there would be acceptable levels with the CLV analysis, but not, in, in the existing intersection, but not with the, the SIM analysis. But my impression was that when I was reviewing the, the report by AMT, you found an unacceptable level at the existing intersection. Can you talk about a little bit about why that might be different?
Well, what we basically talked about was where certain approaches were unacceptable, but the overall intersections were still approaching. So it's essentially like, obviously, even this traffic flowing heavy in the AMP coward going westbound, obviously, that approach is failing where we showed in our tables. But overall, the intersections, like, but like, but when the SIM traffic report comes out, it gives it per approach as well as an overall intersection, so overall, the intersections still do operate. So we concur with the traffic group's results.
Okay.
And with the CLV, obviously, like I said, it's a very crude analysis. It only takes lane configuration, doesn't take traffic signal timings.
And so if I can also ask AMT a little bit more about your analysis on the two B option that you're recommending? I'm not sure if I saw this correctly or not, but it looks like you said that would be, that would be an improvement for the intersection overall and would be at an acceptable level. But then, when I was looking at the chart, it looked like there was an F grade for one of the, one of the directions. Am I, I didn't write down where I saw that, so I don't have that right.
Right, I mean, obviously, like I said, I mean, the signal timings obviously have to be, have to be like, you know, fine-tuned and redone, obviously. Right now, we essentially took what was the, what was the base model, which was done by the county in the latest signal timings. We sort of took that and we sort of moved it over to the latest signal timing. Obviously, if it completely changes, then the signal timings will have to be optimized. So what we did essentially doesn't mean this is what exactly going to happen. I mean, obviously, when we, when we finalize it and it could be the lane, lane configuration could be as the way as a traffic group has it, so then it has to be redone anyway. So our, our signal timing essentially gives, okay, if you just move it and then you just keep the signal timings as is with the phasing and everything. Obviously, once it moves, the signal timings are automatically reoptimized. The county's going to do it, so we're going to do it in an analysis also, so that's what I think.
So your finding for option two B though was that it improved the flow of the intersection overall?
I mean, the bigger, the biggest picture, obviously, with option, let me go back to option two. Right, with option two B is obviously, the, the biggest picture that we saw is essentially takes away the signal here. So that's, that's what we were looking at. It essentially helps the truck bay here because one of the biggest issue was, obviously, you know, with the stop bar being right here with the left turns being allowed and, you know, SCHA had concerns about, you know, trucks going in and coming out right at the stop bar. So that, that essentially helps it. If you're removing a signal, it improves flow, obviously, the, the intersection. And maybe it will also help with the cut-through traffic. People won't cut through that much because they can flow better through one ninety-five and four-ten. So, but then that's the reason why we recommended it, is because it essentially reduces from three signalized intersections to two.
Okay. One of the questions I got from a resident was regarding the movement counts being based on a single day. Is that pretty common standard practice for measuring?
I mean, so the first thing that had, that we did was we compared our counts, because, because the city told us that, you know, you're doing, our traffic group is doing a study. So they did a count on a, on a different day, we did a count on a different day, plus SCHA has counts on their website, the ITMS website, which essentially has counts from different years. And we actually have one of the contracts where we do the counts. So we, when we compared, so the first thing we did was we compared our counts and it was very similar. It was very close. Obviously, the counts are not going to be exact, but it was very similar. And so obviously, we can say that, based on our two studies, obviously, we have already looked at two different days of our studies. What we also did is we compared the previous, so, counts that were done by SHA's contract, by us and by other consultants. And we looked at the ITMS website and essentially they were, they followed a very similar pattern. So we can say that, I mean, we can say that our counts are good, if that's what you want to.
I, I could just add to that. He's absolutely right, and it's not just here in Montgomery County or in Maryland. That's something that happens all over the country. Normally, you take one day at random. We have traffic counting contracts where we count in sixteen states across the country. And when they do their surveys, they do them for one day. Now, obviously, if we go out and do a count and the weather's bad, it's snowing or icy or something like that, then we call the count off and we'll leave the equipment there to do it another day. But the one-day count is common practice in the industry.
Since you're up here, I'll follow up then. I had a question regarding the queue line to get out of the proposed development. The, I think it was a hundred and eighty or a hundred and thirty-eight?
Hundred and thirty-eight.
Is that because of the left turn, because there's a left turn allowed there? Or would that be the same if it were a right turn only?
It could be, it could be the left turn, it could be the right turn. We assume the single lane departure, I believe, out of the garage. So they have to wait, you know, if they get stuck behind somebody, if they want to turn right, somebody's sitting there waiting to turn left, then the car that wants to go right is also going to have to stop. You know, based on the queuing, in all likelihood, if, yes, if we had just right turn out of that driveway, the delay might be a little bit less. But it really depends on the amount of gaps that you get in, in traffic. You know, when we do the queuing studies and show you those solid lines, that's a snapshot in time. But there's a lot of times during that hour when there's no vehicles there and there's the ability for cars to get out. And I would, if you watch the existing parking lot today, people manage to get out of there and they go left and they go right. They just have to be a little patient to do that, which I know isn't what everybody does. But, um, you know, it's, it's a common situation, but it's only one lane going out. So if people will be able to make left turns out of there, they may just have to experience a little more delay than if they were turning right.
Okay. I also wanted to ask about the numbers for the daycare center that you considered. How many cars from that were going through the intersection here? It, it didn't seem like a large number, and how did you come to that determination?
Okay, originally, when we first spoke with Park and Planning about doing the study and getting a list of background developments, the daycare center was not in the picture. But through discussions here and, and comments from the citizens, we heard about the daycare. And we, we talked to the people at Park and Planning. The people who are doing the daycare center study, Marty Wells and Associates, they have not finished their study yet. And we spoke with them and, and they told us that approximately ten percent of the traffic from the daycare center would go up to Philadelphia and head to the north. They made no reference because in their study, they didn't even include these intersections. But I believe based on discussions with the staff or comments from citizens that have gone into Park and Planning and talked to them about this particular project, they have now included this intersection. So yesterday, we got word that we should consider traffic coming up from that direction because they were going to make the other consultant change their trip assignments. And in their study, they, in their scoping agreement, they assumed about twenty-two percent of the traffic from the daycare would want to get to University Boulevard. And there's really two ways for them to do it. One is to cut through the neighborhood and come up Sycamore and go up Carroll, or you could go out Elm Street to six-fifty and get up there that same way. So what we did, although it's not reflected in our report, because we just found out yesterday, we went ahead and did an analysis. And what we did was we assumed that eleven percent of the traffic from the daycare would come up Sycamore and would pass through the realigned intersection that we have. Okay, and that equated to, one second here. It, it was, it was like fifteen cars, I believe, per hour, northbound and fifteen cars southbound. What it did was, the amount of delay for the improved intersection increased by three seconds as a result of the daycare traffic. So we, we did go back and change it. And obviously, when we go back into Park and Planning with the, the plan, we're going to have to modify our report to reflect that. But those assumptions were all based on discussions I had with the Park and Planning Transportation Planner yesterday. Prior to that, we weren't aware of it. So we, soon as we got word, we contacted them and did the analysis to see. But it's a very minimal impact. And when I said that the overall delay of the intersection at worst was thirty seconds, that's with the daycare center traffic figured in.
With this new number?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you for doing that, I think that's really important. Okay, then, if I could address a couple of issues with, regarding cut-through traffic with AMT, that would be great. And then I have a few questions regarding the site plan. So I know you talked about the, the cut-through traffic and you acknowledged that looking just at the numbers that are going from off of Carroll Avenue through Columbia and coming out again at Sycamore doesn't really get at the large, larger picture of cut-through traffic. I just did kind of a quick count estimation and it looks to me like there are about four hundred and thirty-eight cars coming off of Carroll onto Columbia and about three hundred and eighty-three cars turning onto Sycamore, coming into Sycamore. So even though they're not directly using this route of Columbia to cut through and come out on Sycamore, they're clearly using this as a way to get to New Hampshire Avenue, to Eastern Avenue, in one way or another. So I think this is really helpful to have, but I also think it shows that we need to do a lot more work in terms of getting a sense of where all of these cars are going and what they're doing. I was disappointed not to see Elm Avenue on here because I think a lot of those cars that are going down Pine might be turning onto Elm. And I know that's a common cut-through for cars.
We, we didn't put cameras on Elms, that's the reason. We don't have counts there.
Okay. And I believe when we originally talked about doing this, the study of the cut-through traffic, we had originally discussed looking at Woodland and Jackson as well. Is that something that was done?
Yes, we have, we have counts of Woodland and Jackson, but that's essentially traffic coming through. So obviously, I mean, I can provide you with the counts, so I can definitely do that. The only reason I, I did this figure is essentially just looking traffic along Columbia Avenue because that was the bigger issue. I mean, we have, I have counts there, I can basically email it to you.
Yeah, that would be helpful to see.
I would be interested in those too.
Sure, I mean, I'll, yeah, I mean, we have counts there, so I can say.
And not, and not to interrupt, but another, another question in cut-through is, is nobody looked at, appears to have looked at the other side, Jackson, Boyd, Lincoln, and there must be some reason why both of you didn't look at traffic up that way.
You're talking about.
I'm talking, well, let's, let's, let's ask you from AMT. Why, remind me why you focused on the Columbia-Sycamore route and not on a similar route on the other side of the intersection?
Because that was basically what we were asked to do.
I believe though that you did the Jackson numbers.
Yes, I'll, I'll send it to you.
Did do provide some information, although I, I think it would be helpful to have Elm going both directions, actually, in that case.
Sure, definitely.
So that, maybe that's something we could pursue in the future. I think we discussed a little bit looking at Elm, I think it would be useful to have that information. And I know there's also, there are also concerns on the other side for cars taking Maple and then turning on Lincoln and Lee to cut, cut off that section as well. So I think, and this is a larger discussion rather than, than what you've looked at, but I think we as a city should be looking a little more, collecting some of this data.
I mean, we can obviously, I mean, we can obviously do this a lot. I mean, we can obviously carry this conversation forward. If there's certain routes you want us to study, we can, we can obviously, you know, do, do all those studies for you, so that's not a problem at all.
Is there any sense of, like, and, and this is very hard to quantify because every situation is different, but is there any sense of what is sort of a standard amount of traffic on a side street? Whether it's a percentage of the traffic that's on a main thoroughfare or?
Right, I mean, if you're talking about cut-through, it's, it's essentially very different. I mean, it, I mean, obviously, every road is different, every neighborhood is different. I mean, what you'd say is, I mean, we always do like a ten percent of the overall and all that, but then when it comes to people, they don't even want to see one vehicle doing a cut-through in front of their house. So it's all, it's always a perception sort of thing. So, but then this, this numbers basically just present that the cut-through is not just happening because people are coming along four-ten, you know, coming from Jackson and then just going into Columbia and then getting to Philadelphia again. It's essentially happening because people are coming from the south, using Columbia instead of using one ninety-five, four-ten. So that's basically what it does, so. But obviously, like you said, if you want us to study other alternatives and other cut-through routes, we'll be happy to do that.
We can do that. I think one of the things that is, is tricky is that the, kind of the definition of cut-through for this was if you were coming from outside of Tacoma Park, going through Tacoma Park somewhere else. And where I think a lot of this traffic, somebody lives in Tacoma Park that's making some of these turns. It may not be the route that they used to take to get from one place to another, but it's, there's that. When we were, I was going back and looking at kind of how we had discussions about the study and that kind of thing, and we really were focused on this larger cut-through and, and just avoiding the intersection. And so we didn't do lots of counts in a lot of different places or, or have a lot of that. That may be just a, a good other kind of project to do, but it wasn't necessarily something that targeted exactly to what we had asked for. So that's a, I think, a discussion for another night. It's always interesting to get.
And I also think we didn't know that both of you independently were going to actually provide us with a potential option that was so close to each other. So I think having that to work from provides us the opportunity now to consider that, some, maybe some tweaks to come sort of in the middle place is what I like, on both of your options.
Yeah, I mean, there's no right or wrong.
And then go out again and look at some of the, some of this cut-through traffic, given that. Because we started with a, kind of a blank slate. AMT started with a couple of the options that we looked at in 2015, but I think it's reassuring that both of you came to a similar conclusion about what is possible at this intersection. Councilman Kostic?
And, and I would say broadening this out more for ourselves than, than you at this point in time, just to get a sense of what the traffic numbers are in our city in general and, and sort of a baseline for where we are with. and, and sort of a baseline for where we are with, with the different, the number of cars on each of the different streets, I think would be useful to us. And, and sort of to start looking more holistically at how we're approaching things like traffic calming and sidewalk requests and where those are most needed. I think that's something, that's a discussion we should have as a council. Thank you. Then my last questions are for the traffic group regarding the, the NDC project. And the, the image I was looking at was on your report, so I'm not sure where it is on, on here, but it was the, the image that showed the lay-by. We could look at that one. It looks to me like the lay-by here is in a different place than where NDC proposed it in their site plan. It's a little farther east with the, kind of that front cut more in front of the co-op than the original plan that we received. What was the reasoning for doing that?
It was our understanding that because the large tractor trailer is for the co-op, we tried to get the, the rear of that 73-foot truck as close to the co-op as possible. This same lay-by lane was presented at our previous presentation. I'm not sure if, I don't, I don't believe it's moved since that presentation.
I don't think so.
But one thing that the state highway wanted to make sure is, if we have the 73-foot truck turning into that slot, we want that truck to turn into the slot and get parallel without having to re-enter into the traffic flow to back in. So that, as long as that, you know, we want that to be as long as possible to provide that maneuver.
But also, Councilmember, this is because this has the realigned intersection.
Right.
The other site plan does not have the realigned intersection assumed.
Okay. And so I don't have to get an answer right now because I think it's going to take some, some number crunching, but would there actually be more space for the public space that NDC is proposing with this because it's moved forward, eastward?
I believe, and, uh, StreetSense is not here, but originally, it was 74, 75 feet of community space, and that's, that's how I arrived at the 75 from the entrance. So I believe StreetSense and the traffic group plan is very close to being consistent with one another. So.
Okay. I thought I, now I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Yeah, I think, I think it's like 15 feet difference. I think I went through that before.
It's 15 additional feet.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to go back.
Yeah, if we could get the numbers, I think that'd be helpful. Great. Great. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Sorry. Anyone else have any? Councilmember Kohler?
I'll be brief. I know it's getting late. Can you just clarify a couple of points on the 80 seconds and the 30 seconds and so on? So the county delay requirement is to be no more than 80 seconds. That's per light or per, because this intersection is multiple lights, right? So if you're passing through, would it be 80 seconds twice if you, you know, stopped first by Ethan Allen Sycamore and then again at Philadelphia?
They would, they would look at each intersection, even though they're interconnected the way they are and they will be. They would look at it on an intersection basis so that if one of them exceeded 80 and the other one didn't, then we wouldn't necessarily have to do anything to the other one.
Okay.
We would just have to improve the one that has the 80 seconds.
So in this case, you had said that there going to be a failure, certainly with the background traffic added, regardless of whatever we may decide to do with the, with our own junction project. So was that 80 at both of these separate lightings or?
No. The, the 80 was at one intersection.
Okay.
The, the tricky part, and one of the reasons why we use the, the models which are more sophisticated than the CLB methodology that you've heard mentioned tonight, is that when you have intersections that are this closely spaced together, sometimes making an improvement at one intersection will have a benefit on the other intersection. And that's why we need the model because it's not a formula that you need to develop the simulation to see because more gaps may be created and things of that.
But so to some extent, then, if you speed things up through the main part of the intersection, are you just shoving the delays down towards Silver Spring or up toward New Hampshire until 410 becomes a wider road? Or is it clean the whole thing out the whole distance?
Well, it, obviously, the next signalized intersection you come to is going to be evaluated on its own merits, and it depends on the number of lanes and the geometrics and everything.
Right. But if it's still two lanes, I mean, nothing, it's not like a Panacea, it's just trying to make a really bad intersection a little bit better.
Right. But there's a lot of factors in that. The, the amount of traffic on the side street also enters into that picture where if those, you know, the, the upstream intersection has less traffic on the side street, then the delay's going to be less there than it would be down at this intersection.
So, and I mentioned earlier the Philadelphia question, maybe we can check on this. Let's say the current recalibration has improved a lot of lights but worsened it on Philadelphia, and then you mentioned, well, you know, it'll take a certain amount of time for the work to be done. Is it typical to try to fix something like that on an interim basis or is it kind of like, well, you know, someone's got to take the hit while we do the project?
Well, I mean, there, there's adjustments that you can make and, that are very simple. And, you know, if construction, say, starts up at the other intersection and you find out you're having problems down at Philadelphia, you know, certainly, you know, contacting the county signal shop to come out and take a look at it. You know, the best way to do signal timing is, there's all kind of fancy formulas to use, but it's been my experience that the best way to do it is to stay at the intersection and turn the knobs. That's the easiest and the most efficient way of doing it. But you can ask the county to come out and evaluate the timing at any time at any intersection.
It's not, we're not waiting until the project is built.
No, right. But it's my sense, it's my sense that some additional tweaking is needed just based on the reports I'm getting. Just a couple of other things, real quick. So I think we talked about this the last time you were here, but I'd just like to hear it again, if that's okay. In the resolution that we passed in October, we talked about looking at a few different sizes of our, so-called our Tacoma Junction development with a couple of different, three different square footages. And I think what you said last time was, in the scheme of the entire flow of traffic, the differences between those different square footages were fairly small, but can you, if you get what I'm asking, can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. The, and, and I'm not sure about the, whether it was three or what, but I know the original proposal for the property had a certain size building that it envisioned, and the applicant has since gone out and purchased the adjacent car dealership there, which would give him a little more density and a little more development. Just to give you the, the difference in the amount of traffic by buying or purchasing that other property and, and developing it, that, that's going to result in three cars during, three more cars during the morning peak hour and four more cars during the evening. So it's very, because he can only get about 1,400 square feet of additional development with that is, the, the numbers that we were given. So a very little insignificant difference in the number of trucks.
Okay. And lastly, so assuming there's no kind of budgetary or political delays, what's a typical amount of time to design and then construct a significant project like this? Let's say, let's say we all agree tomorrow, we're choosing 2B.3 with this change in that lane, and we knew what it was, and, and the state gave us the money to do the planning, how, how long would the actual work of designing and building?
The intersection, not the road.
The road improvements, not the building.
Yeah, the road improvements, right. And, and give a range. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to hold you to.
Normally, the access permit process through the state highway administration, which is what this would all be covered under. I would say it's probably a two-year process from the time you develop design plans and get approval, final approval to go ahead and start putting a shovel in the ground. I would say it's probably a year and a half to two-year process.
And then you do the shovel in the ground after that. Right. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? So we're just an hour behind. We really appreciate you coming back and spending your evening with us, and I'm sure we'll, we probably will have other questions for you as we go through this. And thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And enjoy the rest of your evening.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We will move on now to the presentation and discussion of the FY19 Community Grant Award Recommendations. So I think we have our folks on our, our community grant awards. Thank you for sitting through the traffic study. You can take it away.
Okay, great. I am presenting on behalf of the committee, and we had a total of 15 organizations that responded to our letter of inquiry this year. We invited all of them to return with an application, and we had, I believe, 13 of the 15 applications were submitted by the April deadline. We recommend that seven are funded by the committee and, oh, and let me just say that our fiscal year 19 budget was decreased from $75,000 to $40,000. So some of the recommendations are based off of the fact that we had a reduction in funding this year. We had a total, the total funding that was submitted by the 13 applicants was $110,557. So four of the organizations are being recommended for full funding, and we have three that are receiving partial funding. So I can, would you like me to explain which ones? Okay. So the past recipients that are recommended for full funding is Create Art Center for $5,000. The first-time recipients of funding include Crossroads Community Food Network for $10,000, Gandhi Brigade for $5,000, and Tacoma Park Cooperative Nursery School for $5,000. Each of the applicants had a track record in providing the program or project they proposed to produce. We felt like they were compelling and innovative and reached the intended audience, specifically low to moderate income residents, and they each provided a pretty strong plan for recruiting the intended audience. For the partial funding, the past recipient is Doxen Progress, and they requested $8,175 and were recommending $5,000. The first-time recipient of funding is Let's Play America. They requested $10,000 and were recommending $5,000. And then Carpe DM Arts' request was $10,000 and we're recommending $5,000. Of the ones that were not recommended for funding, those include Dance Exchange, Montgomery County Collaboration Council, Pyramid Atlantic Arts Center, Literacy Council of Montgomery County, Story Tapestries, and Muvius Contemporary Ballet.
Great. Well, first, I just want to say thank you, Rachel, very much, and to Erin Kelly, who's the staff person who works on this. And we appreciate all the work the committee does on this, and particularly this year since the money was cut, just as we were going through our budget process. So we appreciate you all working as hard as you did to stretch the dollars. I just had one question regarding the Gandhi Brigade programming. Did they specify where they're going to hold their work or, because they talked about doing media training programs in Tacoma Park, and I just didn't know if they also specify just knowing how tight we are on space.
Right. I don't remember that being clarified, but we can definitely find out and get back to you.
Okay. Great. Councilmember Smith, you have questions?
Thank you for doing this. I appreciate it. Why wasn't Montgomery County Collaboration Council funded this year?
So they had been funded in the past, and based on the application, they were funding Essex House in the same building, and we did fund other programs that were in that building. We felt that the project was, that was being offered on just four Fridays to 25 children, so there wasn't the same level of return on investment that there was with some of the other projects.
Okay. And isn't Doxen Progress and Gandhi Brigade, aren't they doing very similar things? So why are we doing, funding both of them rather than just putting all the money into one or the other?
So Doxen Progress, they offered, they were actually providing programming for the city's older adult population, and we felt like that was hitting a unique demographic that we don't typically hit. A lot of the programs are specifically impacting younger children, elementary and middle school, so that was important for us. Gandhi Brigade, I don't know. Do we have notes on the population there? Yeah, they're primarily high school students.
And what is their plan to, to target these high school students?
The particulars, can we get back to on those particulars? Certainly, I'm just believing in their application.
And currently, because they're a Silver Spring organization, are there any Tacoma Park kids that are part of the program?
I believe that one was a school-based program. Is that correct?
Gandhi Brigade?
Yeah. Oh, is that? Okay.
Yes, it has to be because it's part of the grant requirements. More than 50%, I think it's 75%.
Rachel, could you, Ms. Block is on the grants committee, so could you just repeat what she said so we can get it on?
So the, all of the applicants that we did fund were meeting the requirements, the 75% of Tacoma Park residents, as well as the low and moderate income.
Right, right. But that's for, if we give them a grant, I'm saying currently in Silver Spring, are any of the kids that are part of the program from Tacoma Park?
I don't know about currently. I do know that they had a strong model. We felt like the model was strong as far as being able to reach Tacoma Park students, but we can get you more details about what they're currently doing.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Smith? I'm sorry, Siemens?
We look alike. Thank you so much for your work. You were in the, in the committee's work on this. And, yeah, my, my question really, I think, was answered by Mr. Smith's questions, and that was about Tacoma Park residents. I would talk to my colleagues maybe next year in raising the percentage of Tacoma Park participants. And I also like, I guess I'll have to talk to his story at Tacoma, but I'd like to, to see some of these video projects include oral histories because as time passes, we're losing some of the stories. Anyways, thank you for your work.
Yes, sure. Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you very much for all of your work and the committee's work. I was just wondering if you could speak briefly about your process for how you evaluate the applications and what you take into consideration?
Sure. We have a scoring rubric that, I think we put this into place last year, and everybody breaks down based on a scale of one to five, and there's the general review criteria as well as project considerations. So those include whether or not the application is complete and the instructions were followed, compatibility of the proposal with the existing mission of the organization, capacity of the applicant to complete the proposed project within the guidelines, and the ability to satisfy the match requirements. The project considerations include the, making sure that they're meeting the number of beneficiaries from low and moderate incomes as well as Tacoma Park, making sure that it's a proposed program that's clearly defined, it provides greater access to the arts and sciences, and that it has a realistic plan for engaging Tacoma Park residents. And I would say this year in particular, we also asked whether or not it was likely to be funded by somebody else because we wanted to make sure that we were looking at potential projects that were things that were impacting Tacoma Park residents but may not be funded by the general public.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Dibala?
Yeah, thank you very much. For those of us who are new on the council, can, can we get from somebody who got funded last year and whether we got a report from them on the results of their?
I can stick to that really quickly.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I should have thought to ask this before tonight.
No, indeed. And it's, we do get quarterly reports from all of the grantees. So I have, in aggregate, the reports for FY17 and FY18, and I'm pulling those together, and we'll have that to present to council prior to the ordinance scheduled for July 11th. Yeah, absolutely.
That's what I was looking to hear.
I will just put in a plug that Pyramid Atlantic was a, did, received a grant last year, and they're doing the pump-up art in Sligo Creek, and they just started their second installment. So you should go check it out.
I have actually seen.
Yes. So that was the grantee last year. Any other questions? No? Councilwoman Circe?
Great. Well, thank you again for all of your hard work, and I know that as resources continue to be strained, there are so many. there are so many wonderful organizations out there who need funds and it makes decision-making that much harder. One question I have for you, are there some things that the council, aside from money because we don't have much of that, but are there some things that, you know, the council could do to kind of help you all with ensuring that as you're reviewing proposals that they are in line with some of the priorities or the community needs? I know we've talked a bit about the community survey that we're going to put out or as we're talking through council priorities. Are there different things that we could give you all to kind of help you as you're reviewing proposals to identify projects that really could kind of fill a void in the community?
Well, I think that what we've consistently seen that is difficult for people to reach is the, making sure that 75% of the beneficiaries are from Tacoma Park. A lot of the applications don't necessarily come in from Tacoma Park organizations and I think that is a struggle for some of our current grantees and past grantees and that's some of the reasons why we didn't select some of the past grantees for funding this year. I'd also say that I think that there's some barriers for participation with the 501(c)(3) status and I think that if we opened it up and allowed like different groups that, community groups, not just 501(c)(3)'s to participate, who are deeply embedded in their community, then we would definitely be hitting the low and moderate income plus the Tacoma Park residency a lot better.
Thank you so much.
Terrific. Any other questions this evening? All right. Seeing none. Do we have anything else that the committee would like to say or?
I think Nadine wanted to mention that on Friday night, one of the current FY18 grantees will be having a presentation here. It's the Tacoma Refugee Theater Project.
Terrific, all right. Well, I will just say again, thank you very much, Rachel and Nadine, for all your work on the committee and we are hoping to have you back again to discuss next year and talk more about the criteria and some of the things that Councilwoman Circe just asked you. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
All right. Moving on now to our future agenda items. Next week, June 27th, we will have the presentation on the Purple Line construction. We had hoped to have had this at our prior meeting but needed to reschedule. So we have that. And then our voting items next week will be the Second Reading Ordinance, authorizing property transfer between the former John Nevins Andrew School property and Spring Park. Next week, we have tentatively scheduled to vote on a Single Reading Ordinance awarding a contract for Flower Avenue-Green Street construction and tentatively scheduled a Single Reading Ordinance awarding a contract for Lincoln Avenue sidewalk construction. We also have next week a resolution of providing for appointments to our Arts and Humanities Commission and our Recreation Commission. Our work session next week will be a continued discussion of the Tacoma Junction project. We'll have follow-up on traffic studies and a continued discussion of site plan adjustments and clarification of future steps. And so that is on Wednesday, June 27th. Then the next Wednesday is the 4th of July. So I hope everyone is, who is here in town will be at the parade and we will see you all then. The following Wednesday, on July 11th, we will be here. We will have a public hearing. The abandonment of a right of way, it sounds so ominous. This has to do with the Tacoma Park Middle School and a paper street that we just need to kind of clean up the map on. The voting session will be a Single Reading Ordinance authorizing award of the FY19 community grants that we just had the work session on. And tentatively, we have a resolution appointing the new Tacoma Park poet laureate. Our work session that evening will be regarding the abandonment of the right of way and a discussion of FY 2019 Budget Amendment Number One. Then on July 18th, we have the First Reading Ordinance authorizing FY 2019 Budget Number One and discussion of the formation of a Legal Services Review Group. And then that brings us to our final meeting, which is July 25th. The voting session will be a Second Reading Ordinance authorizing the FY 2019 Budget Number One and a resolution setting forth the City Council's summer recess. What I just read, you did not include the new dates that we were just able to post this afternoon regarding Tacoma Junction and I will get those to you right now. We did post a blog this afternoon to kind of walk everyone through the next couple of weeks on the project. I will say I know that over the last four years, as we've talked about Tacoma Junction, whenever we get to a decision point, like we are now, we all are, get very stressed, as more so than normal. These are important decisions we're making and these are hard decisions, especially when, as a community, we are not all in agreement. And I just wanted to extend on behalf of the entire City Council, our appreciation of the time and energy that has gone into coming to these meetings, expressing concerns and asking questions. As I have said in the past to many of you, you know, having these formal meetings set up is not conducive to real dialogue and back and forth conversation. Knowing that, at the beginning of this process, in the last few months, we had scheduled the open house and the pop-up at the lot as part of our process. And we had done similar types of things before. But, and in addition to that, most of us have been holding one-on-one meetings and group meetings. But even though we've done those things, we have all heard, I think many of us, that people would think that these conversations have not been sufficient and would like more time to ask questions and follow-up questions of each of us. And so taking that into consideration, we are going to hold a special session on the evening of July 9th. It's a Monday evening, to provide an opportunity for more exchange with council members. We're currently working out the logistics of this to see how it can work to maximize conversation and dialogue and back and forth and to facilitate as many residents as possible asking questions. So more to come on that, but please hold that date on July 9th, the evening. It's a Monday evening. And I just want to say thank you to Jackie Moore, who helped me think through some ideas on this on Father's Day with a number of residents in Ward Two. In addition, I would just like to ask folks as we go into the next few weeks, and I ask this of all of us here on council as well as residents, that before we respond to an email, before we post something on Facebook, that we all pause and think. Because we're all part of this community. We're all friends, neighbors, and no, we don't agree on this project, but we are a community. And the most important thing about the next month is how we decide to disagree with each other. So over the last few weeks, as I said, people have gotten, people have gotten stressed and I have personally heard and seen things written about our city staff, my colleagues up here, and about other residents. And I know we are better than this. And regardless of what happens with this project, even in not just the next few months, but in the next few years, as we heard from the traffic group tonight, you know, depending on how things go, this is something that we will be considering and thinking about for a while. We are a community of people and that's what defines us and will define us for years to come. So I know it's hard and I know it's hard to disagree with people who are your neighbors and friends, people you respect, but I think if we all just pause a little bit this summer, over the next couple of weeks, to think and not so quickly respond, and I know I've been there myself responding quickly to emails, but I think we can get through and not just get through, but be a strong community over the next few weeks. So I would also like to let folks know that this afternoon, we sent a letter to the Co-op Board President, Rachel Hardwick, in response to her letter earlier in June. And we're glad to hear that mediation is, plans for that are moving forward between NDC and the Co-op and we hope that schedule gets set soon. I know many of you are interested in our work on the racial equity piece that we've been working hard on and I think we're really close to having something to share within the week on that. Keeping all of that in mind, as I said, we posted a blog this afternoon and this is our schedule moving forward over the next month. Tonight, June 20th, we had the presentation of the final traffic analysis by both Traffic Engineering Consultants. Next week, we'll have continued discussion about the site plan and adjustments made based on council feedback and clarification on future steps. The week of July 2nd, we will have a draft resolution made public, made public to everyone in advance of our July 11th work session on the resolution. And as we have promised the Co-op in our conversations, any resolution clauses pertaining to the Co-op, we will work with them prior to our July 11th work session. As I mentioned, the resolution draft will be posted before the July 11 workshop and before we have the July 9th special meeting, one-on-one conversations with council members. Then on July 11th, we'll have a work session on the resolution and we're scheduled on July 25th to have a voting session on that resolution. As we have stated before, our vision for Tacoma Junction is to create a well-functioning area overall. It's one of the reasons that we are spending so much time thinking through these traffic studies and what they may mean for the overall functioning of the junction. And we are looking to have a thriving, beautiful, functional, and truly Tacoma Park, Tacoma Junction. And we all believe that essential to this project succeeding is the continued success and involvement of the Co-op and we look forward to working with the community, with NDC, and with the Co-op over the next few weeks. So with that, I just wanted to let people know that before we began our public comments for this evening. First, we will have public comments on voting items. We have two voting items tonight. One is the First Reading Ordinance authorizing property transfer between the former John Nevins Andrew School and Spring Park. Does anyone have any voting, excuse me, comments on that? Okay, seeing none. Next, we have the Single Reading Ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for the Lunch and Learn program. Any comments on that? Okay, now we will take public comments on any items people would like to speak to.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Reginald J. Ruffin. I live in Ward Three. All right, well, yes, we are a community. How many times have I said, and you've heard me say Tacoma Park's culture is community first? How many times, many times? Some of you stated the goals, your outcomes are to, that we, that we develop, that this development will help local businesses. Okay, that sounds good. So the community first and helping local businesses go hand in hand. The Co-op is a local business. Not just a local business, but a local legend. Putting community first means that this local legend, this Co-op, wouldn't have to be negotiating for its very existence. Putting community first would help, would help the Co-op, not put it in a mediation. In fact, that a local legend like the Co-op has to fight for its very existence and mediate with a corporation entity that hasn't even laid a brick means that corporate interests are being put ahead of the community interest. And that's not in the interest, and that's not in the interest of local business and it's definitely not the culture of Tacoma Park. And I speak from 50 years, over 50 years, after over, I couldn't count, over half a century of living and being raised here as a child from Tacoma Park. And I'm, I'm not against, by the way, I'm not against development. But I am against the kind of development that makes the corporate, the corporation a priority and not the community. I am against development that doesn't put us, the citizens, first. And when you have a community first, it's not to say that it just affects a residential area, no. It has to be more than just, when you say it just affects a residential area, I heard that comment. I don't want to misinterpret it. Because if it just affects a residential area, then we're still, again, we're putting corporate interests before community interests. So during the study, I was trying to pay attention to the traffic study. I was trying to listen and they were talking about the effects of traffic and the flow. I was trying to figure out at what point in the, and they may have said it in the presentation, but at what point in the presentation did they even mention how it would affect the businesses or the safety of the citizens? Again, community first. We already know that the traffic is bad in that area we've experienced. And all they said was that it's going to get worse when we do these kind of developments. So cutting through, cutting to the chase. Okay, cutting to the chase, when you put community first, we're going to say again that you can't just ignore what's going on. And you're right, we are a community and we feel like a community, in fact, a family. So as a family, we need to come to some kind of middle ground. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ben Miller from Ward Three and I've lived in Tacoma Park for 21 years. In the various conversations I've had with folks about alternatives to the proposed development, one response I hear over and over is, well, it's all very nice and we're really on the same side, but it's impossible to completely stop the commercialization and gentrification of the world, Tacoma, and finally, the junction. And this sense of reluctant defeat to, that's just the way the world works, is a feeling that I can definitely sympathize with. For instance, like, I need a phone. In order to have a phone, I need cobalt and that's going to support some child labor, what have you, exposure to toxins in terms of like people mining the DRC. I can't stop that. What I'd like to point out tonight is that Tacoma Park stands at a unique cross-ground of four characteristics which allow our story to diverge from the norm. Tacoma Park is the only place I've come across that possesses these four powerful characteristics. One, a progressive and compassionate citizenry, in theory at least. Tacoma Park has always prided itself on inclusivity and welcoming its citizens. Two, the fiscal means to fund visionary work, AKA the money to sponsor that compassion. Three, a small enough scale to make radical plans a reality. Our size allows us the privilege of creating change more quickly and more profoundly than other larger cities. And four, the audacity to be different. From saying no to the highway way back when, to declaring a nuclear free zone, to extending voting rights to 16-year-olds and ex-felons, our history is proof that we have not and we need not subscribe to the same rules and expectations that govern the rest of our country. We have served as a radical precedent for other cities in the past and we can do that now. It's times like these in deciding what to do with the last piece of public land, which presents the people of Tacoma Park with the rare opportunity to counter that narrative of reluctant acceptance of commercialization and exclusivity. The opportunity to, to use that public land to encourage diversity rather than encourage a wealthy, white-dominated space. The facts of the matter are this. The businesses in the development will be expensive. Low, low-income folks, of which there are many in the surrounding area, won't be able to afford the majority of those businesses and they will be further excluded from that junction area. We have the drive to make this city different from the rest of the country, a city that actively tries to build an equitable society, rather than just tries to minimize exclusion and gentrification, though I see little effort from the council to even do that. And did I mention we have the money to do it? There's tons of influence in this community. So I urge everyone listening tonight not to surrender to a defeatist rhetoric surrounding what is inevitable. We have the will and we have the money to make that space visionary. Because I know that many are in support of the proposed development, I don't find it reasonable to ask y'all to not commercialize the lot at all. But what about half the space being communal and free of charge? Are you really telling me that the developer in the city making slightly less money is not worth making an inclusive space? Show us where your priorities lie.
Hi, you know me, I'm Robyn. Couple things. One is, Kate, you had sent out a letter today mentioning that, and it stipulates that you had said that the negotiations will be, or the mediation will be going on until, expected until mid to September. But you're going to make a decision in July. Can't quite fit that into a timeline. I'd really like some explanation about that because that doesn't make sense to me. If there's still a lot of large unresolved issues, why a resolution will be, would be determined before those things are ironed out? The other thing is I'm looking at these traffic studies and I can see where the layby is for the truck and the truck will be pointed to head out east on East West Highway and, and then take itself north or south on New Hampshire presumably. Because these are big trucks, so they need a big road, right? But how is that truck going to get there? I'm wondering, the trucks expected then that they'll be coming from New Hampshire Avenue, then crossing in on Piney Branch and then coming up on Philadelphia and then turning? Because they're not going to be trundling, I don't think, through downtown Tacoma Park, or maybe they are. But they're not going to be airlifted in front of the Co-op or in front of that development. So how are they going to get there? I didn't hear anybody addressing that. And those are some big trucks. So I think that that's an important thing to consider for any businesses that are there, but particularly the Co-op. And that was, that's an unanswered question, at least for me.
Mayor, Councilpersons, and City Staff, Jeff Trunzo, Sherman Avenue. So I just want to say that I thank you for all your continued efforts to support or revitalize Tacoma Junction and I endorse the plan that was explained tonight through the end. That's all I'm going to say about Tacoma Junction. So three other observations, because I'm so looking forward to talking about other topics in the future. One is, tomorrow is the last day of early voting, and we have several candidates who are residents of Tacoma Park who are running, so please give them some consideration. But do early vote tomorrow. Turnout has been slow, so turnout is really not what's been expected. The other thing I noticed today is that there was an eviction on Maple Avenue. And evictions really bother me. There's just something about it's too late to do anything to help that is very disturbing. So I hope that sometime in the future, you know, the council might be able to look at what the process is and what we might want to do, either with notification or just doing anything except seeing people's belongings out on the street. I just find that very disturbing. And the last thing is parking. I think everybody knows that I don't like the city's parking policy, but it's, what I don't like about it mostly is that it forces me to complain, and I hate to complain. So as Councilmember Costeak knows, and the Police Department has been super responsive, there has been a vehicle stored in front of my house since before Memorial Day. And I know nobody believes that people park a car and leave it for a month, but they do. And it happens in front of my house about three or four times a year. So I would just like to find a way that's not enforcement. And the only idea I really have about that situation is that we have a very nice street sweeping program. And if there was some way that maybe cars were forced to move at least once a week to accommodate street sweeping, I wouldn't have a car that's in front of my house for a month. And it's not really the car that bothers me, but it's the reason. You know, have the folks been deported? Is there something going on? There's just an element of creepiness that I don't like. That's all I have to say.
Good evening. Tim Mail, 7003 Woodland Avenue. I wanted to read to you a bit from a letter from myself and about a dozen neighbors on Woodland. I'll send the letter later on to the city clerk. The residents include myself, Craig Hooper, Martha Watson, Peter Bachman, Lorraine Ronche, Dave Vernon, Kari McDonough, Dennis McDonough, and Dirk Beiler. We're neighbors on Woodland, deeply appreciative of your service. We write to express our support for and excitement about the project that the city and the Neighborhood Development Company, a minority-owned local business, are pursuing together. We encourage you to move forward with the proposed two-story building and site plan currently scheduled for completion in 2021. Although it's easy to be fearful about change, seeing the benefits and vibrancy that building redevelopments over the last 10 years have brought to the city and nearby areas, we can imagine a future where we're within walking distance of many wonderful new services at the junction. We support that future and this project. While the project has our support, we also want to encourage you to keep up your engagement as our elected representatives. We depend upon you to negotiate final adjustments in the plan that accommodate nearby business concerns, minimize or avoid negative effects on pedestrian safety, and produce a development around which outdoor spaces are useful and fun places to be. We know it's hard to get these details right, but that's precisely why we need you to represent us in this process. In addition, please make a commitment to step up work with the State Highway Administration to devise future projects that will make the intersection of these two state highways safer and less congested. Continued population growth in the area will create more strains on our road infrastructure, and we believe future changes are needed separate from the redevelopment project. We know you can help us do better than the status quo on the roads at the junction today. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sally Kern, 7114 Woodland Avenue. And I just had a few notes that I wrote, and I will, it would be easier just to say them now rather than writing them to Cindy. One, I would hope that in any kind of improvements of this area, that you consider covering the bus stops from, so that bus waiters at bus stops can be sheltered from inclement weather. I hear that a lot, and, you know, I'm in my car a lot, I'm walking, but I don't take the bus, and I know a lot of people do. Two, I hope that you can reserve the grand crosswalk. I understand it slows traffic, but my uninformed thought is that if you give up the crosswalk so you can speed cars through, there'll just be more cars coming through. And I would love to see this area be walkable because, you know, we have the new Carroll, the Carroll Avenue, we'll have the new junction, you know, let's keep the stuff moving, and also school, kids walking to school. I noticed in the NDC configuration that people, motorists driving east and motorists from Sycamore going north will not be able to approach the parking at, on the Carroll Avenue shops without going, they can't cross the yellow, double-yellow line illegally, so they'll have to go down, go down Lee, and then find a driveway, turn around, and come back. So, for example, if you're coming up Philadelphia, you would have to go up Philadelphia, go through that light, go through the junction light, turn left, go down Lee, driveway, turn around, if you, for example, have a big load of packages you want to take to the FedEx place. I think that the end of the triangle encourages jaywalking for the high school students who have the bus stop right at the laundromat. And I understand you'll do some kind of landscaping, you know, cattle fence, whatever, to keep them out. And I would also, with the Central NEA, I hope that you consider the fact that there'll be a lot of people taking the bus, and hopefully, there'll be situations for that. And also, I would imagine people would be coming from New Hampshire as well, not just university. And I hope that you consider painting the white line for the egress from Woodland, because we cannot and haven't been able for 20 years during, to make a left west on, off Woodland during rush hour. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Byrne Kelly, Circle Woods, Tacoma Park. I was criticized recently for my behavior here in the chamber. Someone said, "We need to respect our elders." And so Terry, I, I'm sorry. Because in my, in my, in my 64th year, I don't think anybody else is my elder.
I'm not sure I am either.
But I, I, as I think the point was, we were to look back at history and respect what came before us. And those of you that are on the council that ran unopposed, I'm sure you weren't looking at this that was coming at you, this process. Pretty tough. And what we are looking at is mediocrity. Tim's letter, Tim Mail's letter was about mediocrity and a different place. Our junction is a city-owned lot, and we have a cookie-cutter building, a formulaic building, and it doesn't do anything for the co-op, and it doesn't do anything, for what I can tell, for the majority of the people who are speaking up on this. I think we need something much better, much more iconic, much more classy and definitively good architecture. And I think we're missing big opportunities, because that building needs to include things like what the co-op needs, and a food bank or a food kitchen, a place for teens, not about a corporation getting a sweet deal and making a profit. I just don't think that's Tacoma Park, Mayor. I think if we are what you think we are, or you say we are, you all aren't it. You all are not acting that way. I grew up in DC, I fought and marched for everything. I marched with Martin Luther King. I marched for women's rights, gay rights, home rule. I was against Vietnam War, and I'm against this, what we're doing. You have plenty of time, this is a 99-year project. Stop it. Go to the drawing board, wait for the mediation. The co-op needs to figure out how to make some concessions and some compromises, but so do you. This is a really bad mistake. You guys are not changing your track. We can see that. Okay? And it may cost some of you your jobs, because we can see that, because we don't see an earnest look at what people are telling you. We do not see progressive minds, creative thinking. We do not see a 99-year opportunity to make something fantastic. What we see is, we get a piece of Bethesda now, and there's these younger people who came into the city with enough money to live here, who want a certain thing for the "we." The "we" is not Tacoma Park. The white people in this town are not the majority. This is a minority-majority town, and we need to serve everybody. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Robert Anderson, Woodland Avenue, Vice President of the Co-op. Have a statement about mediation this evening. And, Miss Mayor, thank you for your missive to our president today. We appreciate that. Co-op has agreed to mediation with the Neighborhood Development Corporation because we hope we'll help resolve serious operational concerns we have related to NDC's plans to develop Tacoma Junction. We're committed to working in good faith with the developer to achieve reasonable accommodation to the co-op's operational needs, and we are grateful to the city for including the reasonable accommodation provision in its agreement with NDC. As you know, we are seeking to address the following operational needs. Number one, adequate space to accommodate 10 to 20 truck deliveries a day. The deliveries unavoidably include multiple trucks arriving at the same time. Two, adequate parking for staff and customers. Three, adequate space for store recycling and waste. And four, assurance the co-op will be able to continue operations during construction. Currently, deliveries, waste disposal, and parking are accommodated through a longstanding agreement the co-op has with the city to lease a portion of the city lot. We've been consulting with experts in connection with these issues, and we will be prepared to offer solutions that will allow the co-op to operate and continue to serve our members and community. We're also hopeful NDC will offer proposals addressing our concerns that we can assess as part of the mediation process. In careful consultation with experts on co-op expansion, we also have been evaluating all facets of our operational needs, including the business, financial, and market realities the co-op faces. During mediation, we'll be ready to answer questions NDC or the mediator may have about these issues, and to explain what parameters are feasible for the co-op. We also expect to explore with NDC whether expansion of co-op operations is possible. A central question will be rent we can afford. Other issues will include the nature of the space and the ability of the co-op to meet its overall operational needs once a new building is in place. We're grateful to the council for enabling this process and repeat our request that you refrain from voting on the project until mediation is completed. As we previously wrote to you, the co-op has serious concerns that a vote before mediation is over will undermine, undermine the mediation process and the council's decision-making process under the development agreement. Given that all parties have now committed to mediation as a way to reach agreement on what reasonable accommodations can be made to the co-op's needs in the proposed development, it only makes sense to maintain the status quo until it is concluded. The support of the city and community, along with hard work of our dedicated staff and management, have made the co-op a successful business that's grown over the years at the junction. We very much hope to be able to continue to improve and even better serve our community for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Hi, good evening. I'm Brenda Platt, and I've been a resident of Tacoma Park since 1989, more than 20 years in Ward 1, and more recently in Ward 2. Most of you know me through my work in composting here and with the Young Activists Club and getting styrofoam out of our city. But I also am the co-director of a national nonprofit organization called the Institute for Local Self-Reliance based in DC. And one of our key initiatives is promoting independent businesses and community-scaled economy. We have, in that work, and what we do is we promote commercial development that supports community and local independent businesses, and we have a lot of resources, including in cities around the country, there's new action on a commercial affordability. We have documented many examples of what other cities are doing to promote community-scaled business districts and whatnot, including things like New York City and Boulder, Colorado, to widely varying-sized communities that are looking at these things and doing things like set-asides for small-scale businesses in their commercial development. So I just wanted to encourage you to avail yourself of some of our, our resources. Since I've been a resident of Tacoma Park, I've been a patron of the co-op since when it was on Sligo Avenue before it moved to Carroll, and I do have some concerns about a developer-driven project that is pushing out a walkable grocery store. So many cities around the country, this is exactly what they want, is a walkable grocery store in their community, a small one. And I think the first priority for the city is to protect the co-op and its longevity and its ability to operate. It's an incredible asset for our community. And then second, the development has to be compatible, not only with the co-op in the surrounding area, but things like I mentioned with set-asides for small-scale businesses. So thank you for your time, and we're available to help. Thank you.
Hi, Jordi Hanem, Ward 3. I live on Sherman Avenue, Sherman Avenue. And I wanted to, I've been here for a few weeks, but I wanted to pick up on something Mayor Stort said about kind of the intensity of the debate, and some of the charges leveled at the council. And I wanted to defend the council and the mayor on, on some of these, some of these items. But one, just I know, and this came up particularly last week, but on the issue of racial equity, I did, I see, saw reports in the National League of Cities, which had this to say about Mayor Stort and the city council, which was, quote, "As a city of 17,600, Tacoma Park is one of the few small cities to tackle racial inequities through leadership from the mayor and city council." It goes on to add that, quote, "A small city without extensive resources, Tacoma Park has recognized the challenge of assessing disparate racial impact, and potentially some of the benefits of the junction may, some of the resources may be used to address some of the inequities." On process, I think Bruce Williams, along with former council members Fred Schultz and Tim Mail, wrote a strong letter a few weeks back in which they urged the council to move ahead with the site plan, making clear that it meets the priorities set by earlier council resolution and by the Tacoma Junction Task Force on traffic. David Cronroth, who's a professor at University of Maryland, wrote, I thought, a very thoughtful piece, which is on the city's website that addresses many of the logistics and commercial issues, and particularly discusses traffic and how the junction would not exacerbate it. And I think the analysis from the consultants made clear that it, that with improvements, that it would not be an onerous impediment with, with the junction. And the only other thing I wanted to add is, I know there was a recent letter talking about delaying and moving away from, from the junction, and it particularly cited the petition and the number of those who signed against it. I will say that in terms of this position, this petition, since I was asked about it, the signatures have been collected by asking people, quote, "Will you sign a petition to save the co-op?" In my case and that of others, when asked if this petition was to reject the current proposal, we were told that it wasn't, but that's in fact what it does. And I would say that one can make an equally strong case that saving the co-op will come with redevelopment, that an influx of new customers, literally at their doorstep, who decided, yes, they need IPA and guacamole right now, is something that could, could benefit the junction. So I do support it, and I support the process forward. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Rice. I reside on Park Avenue in Ward 1. Tonight, I want to talk about a couple things. First of all, I continue to support the ongoing effort to revitalize the Tacoma Junction area. Tonight, I would like to make a request of the city council regarding the mediation process between the co-op and NDC. I am requesting that the city council require both the co-op and NDC to prepare and submit what is known as a position statement, a minimum of five business days prior to commencement of mediation. The purpose of the position statement document is to provide the mediator with useful information about any disputes and acts as a starting point for the mediation process. I just learned about this a few days ago, and if anybody's unaware or aware of what a position statement is, please, please look it up and educate yourself like I did. And Peter, I hope- And Peter, I hope you and your colleagues will look into the importance of requiring both the Co-op and NDC to prepare a position statement. It's my understanding the city is paying for the mediation, so the city has every right to make this request. Regarding the traffic study, in my opinion, the traffic group has a very good proposal for the Tacoma Junction intersection with some minor tweaks. Tonight, there was some discussion of cut-through traffic. And one way to mitigate cut-through traffic is to make the Tacoma Junction intersection more functional, as proposed by the traffic group. Once the intersection is reconfigured, cut-through traffic should decrease. And lastly, I'd just like to say, thank you for your continued time and dedication to move this revitalization effort forward. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Nadine Block, Ward 3, and I sat through all of this, and I appreciate all the work that you all do, and I want to get up and be heard as well, as you've heard me before. So I want to go on record, and, as you know, I serve the community in various capacities, and I am really dedicated to building community. We've heard tonight from youth and from elders talking about community over corporation, and the priority of actually embracing real visionary transformative potential here, not more of the same. I have to say that this is directly in contrast with what Tim Mail said. Putting this big box here, or a little box here, without thinking about how to build community is not change. It's more of the same. It's more status quo. And I don't know why we have to do business as usual here in Tacoma Park. That's defeatist. It's fatalistic. We need people to stand up and be leaders and actually doing things that are matter and change. We need to build community capacity. We need to work on a community-scaled economy. This is the edge. We provide ourselves, we are proud of ourselves as being on the cutting edge of development here in Tacoma Park. Well, this development, as currently proposed from NDC, is behind the times. It's not what we should be doing. We need to build up the economic equity and address racial equity, and create space and opportunity for people simply to be together, to be comfortable with each other, to work together, hang out together, not have to buy things. And we can do it here. There's plenty of resources here to put in a green public space, a smaller building, and have community control of resources. Build out the space as a food hub. We already have the Co-op. We know we need a mid-sized commercial kitchen in the county. We know we could have a demonstration community composting operation. We can partner with schools. We have some of this work already in place. We would like to see these upcoming decisions about the Purple Line, about rapid bus transit, about improving the rec center on New Hampshire Avenue, and about development on New Hampshire Avenue take priority over this small, little development in Tacoma Junction. This is about actually putting our money where our mouth is, about supporting the communities that want, and the locations in our communities that want more development and want improvements in what is there, and we can do that. I think it's really important that we send a clear message by committing, the community commits to waiting, to vote on this issue until mediation is done. It makes absolutely no sense, or it makes a lot of sense if you're just going to disregard the mediation process to vote before the mediation is done. I think it's really a slap in the face of all of the lovely words that we do here. I think it's really important to wait until mediation is finished, to go forward. And I thank you all for listening, and I want to again say that the Junction Task Force recommendations are not being met. We haven't addressed the traffic before we're going forward, or the parking, or more green space, or the making sure that Co-op will exist. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. Jackie Moore, Ward 2, Aspen Avenue. I wanted to start by thanking council members, as well as the mayor, for extra meetings in parks and homes, as well as those of you council members who've been willing to go into extra innings after meetings. I do think that the town hall idea is a good one. It's on July 9th, so, yes, let's go forward and have it, but let's make sure we have plenty of time built in to digest the input that you get from that. I'm still concerned that the traffic study didn't really go through the potential cut-through traffic on Lincoln, Jackson, and Boyd, and I also did not hear information about the potential impact on emergency services. And I guess that's it for this evening. But, again, thank you for the extra time. Let's take what's been discussed in that extra time and really make sure that everybody gets to hear it, process it, and use that information to move forward before any further decision-making gets done. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
My name's Dave Cookson. I'm a resident of Grand Avenue. I've lived here for about 19 years. So the reason I wanted to talk to you guys today is that I'm a professional transportation planner, so I'm usually on the other side, normally just getting yelled at was sort of my normal thing. So I'm a little uncomfortable on this side, but I'm not going to be yelling at people. So, I mean, tonight, you'll probably will have heard, or will hear, or hear from all different members of the public about the traffic, both the traffic studies that were completed. You'll hear a lot of questions, like, you know, why didn't the study request all the cut-through traffic? You know, what about autonomous cars? What about Uber? A whole series of things and questions. So, you know, they're really great, interesting questions, but we need to get to the fundamental thing about what these traffic studies are. They're to guide you, as decision-makers and policymakers in this city, to guide you on your making your decisions to move forward. That's what I hope you would use these traffic studies to do. So it's simply a tool. So, you know, we ask these questions about, in the traffic studies, and a lot of it was looking at traffic congestion. So these studies are going to return with solutions that address these concerns, because those are the things that we ask them, or the city asks them to do, and the county has asked them to do. You know, the city, the engineers did their job, which is to return an engineering solution to the problem that was presented to them. And this intersection, this reconfigured intersection, I'm sure is going to provide a lot of benefits to both the people that are going to be traveling through the intersection, that are coming to the intersection to shop and work and play. But so, a fundamental truth about capacity improvements, which what this series, this intersection improvement is, is at some point, the demand on that intersection will come back up to, and will be at the same place probably a couple of years from now, or many years from now. So there's things that you, as a decision-maker, need to be mindful of. So when I'm talking about traffic studies, we can't ascribe too much power to those things. They play a role, but they shouldn't really 100% guide the decision-making process as the city moves forward. And this is a project that is, in my opinion, is a straightforward incremental infill project that has been done in all sorts of cities and states across the country. And the reason it works is that it's a proven process and a proven type of project that has a good return, and so I really urge you to take these things into consideration as you make your decision. Thanks.
Thank you. [applause] Great. Any other comments this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on now to council comments. Do you have any council comments this evening? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I was going to have comments about what's happening at the national level, but thankfully, President Trump caved in and was forced to do what was compassionate. I did want to address a couple of concerns we heard during the public comment session. I was also surprised to see the eviction on Maple Avenue today. Most frequently, I've been able to be notified when something like that's going to happen. But I think in this case, the manager did not notify the city or me that this was going to happen. Sometimes we're able to alleviate that, and in this case, we weren't. So we'll be talking to the manager and see if maybe we can have better communications next time, so that, don't put somebody out on the street. It doesn't mean they don't get evicted, but it means that we find a little bit more compassionate way of doing it. I've used the word twice, now if one more time, it's mine, right? And then the abandoned car on the street, I think that's something that the city does address through enforcement sometimes. I've been enthusiastic with that myself, because I sometimes leave a car on the street for more than, whatever it is, 72 hours. But I think if it's been there since Memorial Day, there's probably something that the police can do to identify whether it's an abandoned car, or if it actually is a neighbor who's parked there for a while. So I'm sure that staff can check that for us. Thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. Excuse me. In the interest of time, I won't share too much, but I did want to note that the Council of Government's Transportation Planning Board had a meeting today, and there was a very interesting presentation about demographic trends in transportation, and some of the impacts that those have on transportation in the region as a whole. So some of the things that, there was data on related to boomers retiring, as well as working longer, the numbers of people in the region teleworking, and how that's impacting transportation use, the numbers of people using cars, transit, walking, biking, and a whole variety of other things. So they are going to get a link up on the website soon, and I will share that information with my colleagues and the staff and residents who might be interested as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Circe.
Good evening, everybody. You guys are holding up strong. Thanks for sticking around. So a couple of quick updates. Becca Lily Park, so for folks who may not be aware, there was a large tree that fell during some of the recent storms and completely demolished the playground. County staff have been out to kind of take things down because it was a hazard. I followed up with staff regarding when we could expect to see that playground rebuilt. And so basically, they have to wait. They have an order ready to go, but they're just waiting for the turn of the fiscal year, which should happen in July, before having the resources, they'll have the resources then to order the parts. So I will follow up with staff at the end of the month, maybe early, after the 4th, to kind of get a better estimate on when we could expect to have the new playground equipment at Becca Lily. Another quick update, so on, thank you to those who came out on June 8th to the Lunch with the Mayor at Sardi's with State Senator Will Smith. It was a great opportunity to kind of sit around and chat about what people, what's impacting residents and what folks think, and have a great lunch. So I want to encourage people to come out on the 4th of July, actually, so after the parade. There will be the Crossroads Farmers Market on Ann Street. It's still going, it will be happening, starting at 11:00 a.m., and will go until 3:00. And so we're going to have a Ward 6 Day, and the mayor will be joining us for lunch. So it'll be a Lunch with the Mayor slash Ward 6 Day at the Crossroads Farmers Market on the 4th of July. So go to the parade. Don't feel like firing up the grill. Come to the Crossroads Farmers Market, have a hot dog. It'll be, it should be great fun. And lastly, regarding Hillwood Manor Park, so we are continuing to have conversations with various nonprofits and county staff around potential ways of improving that park. And so the mayor and I will be attending the tour of the parks in the city with Casey Anderson on July 6th, and we will start at Hillwood Manor at about 2:30. So I've encouraged residents to come out. Also, I am meeting with a representative from the Maryland Parks Foundation tomorrow at Hillwood Manor Park. So thank you so much to the residents who continue to come out and voice your concerns, and the fact that residents are actually looking for funding opportunities. I'm so grateful that everyone's really coming together and rallying around, trying to make the necessary improvements throughout the city. So, again, I will keep folks informed as I learn more. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman Dibala.
Yeah. To do you one better, Ward 2 Day at the Crossroads. [laughing] And the mayor is invited, and all of you are invited. This is next Wednesday, 11 to 3. Come on down, buy some produce, have a hot lunch, do a little dancing. I understand there'll be a great band. So that'll be one opportunity to see your council member meet. And another opportunity is tomorrow, Meet at the Creek is back, weather depending, from 5:00 to 6:30 at Sligo Creek at the picnic center at the foot of Flower, for anyone who wants to come out and have a brief one-on-one chat with me about anything, not just the junction. And last but not least, Long Branch-Sligo neighborhood is going through the final stages of the Washington Gas Project. Repaving and milling has started. Comments to me and to Public Works have started, and we're dealing with it day by day. And so if there is a concern in the neighborhood, just let me or Darrell know, and we'll work it out with Washington Gas.
Councilwoman Kovar.
Thank you. I won't tell you the date now, but there's also going to be a Ward 1 day.
You know, you're after us.
I don't want to step on your parade, literally or otherwise. Just three things all connected to North Tacoma. It's a North Tacoma kind of day. First of all, I've mentioned previously, and I circulate this information to my colleagues on council, and the mayor has been involved in the planning for it, that the design charrette process for the Montgomery College Math Science Bill is going to, beginning to get started. In fact, the kickoff is tomorrow. I personally won't be able to be there, but it's an ice cream social at Montgomery College, and it's an opportunity to meet the design team. So you don't have to be from North Tacoma to go. Anyone can go. And that's just an informal gathering. Then next week, the 28th, 7:00, sorry, both of them starting at 7:00. The following week, then, is the first, is the actual design kickoff. And we'll probably have one more meeting in the earlier part of July, but nothing in the latter part of July or August. And then September and October, there'll be several meetings. And that'll be when we're moving toward the process, where eventually the college will send the proposed design to the county, most likely in late October or November. So I'll continue to announce these as they go, but tomorrow's the ice cream one, which I'll miss. Secondly, the ongoing Pepco work in North Tacoma, we certainly talked about it a lot. We've gone some updates on where they'll be over the next few months and beyond. One of the things, and maybe if the city manager could take a look at this, at the beginning each day when the detour gets set up, usually around 9:00, in some cases, the area gets closed off, honestly, before the flag people are fully in place. And I think it might work just to have occasionally an officer just stop by, just to check and help out, so that we don't run into trouble there. And the second question is the ride on buses. In general, we've tried to not have them go down the very narrow streets there, and it seems like whenever I go, I see a ride-on bus not in service going down there, and that sort of drives people crazy. The ones that are in service seem to avoid it. So maybe you could check on that. And then the last thing is, in the recent heavy rain, we just heard another example of that tonight, but a large number of people on multiple streets in North Tacoma, Tacoma Avenue, Boston Avenue, and others, had really eruptions of sewage into their basements. And some have had it several times. It all flows down. I think the low point is where Philadelphia and Piney Branch meet. And so I was at a meeting the other night with about 12 of those residents, and, number one, if anyone anywhere else in the city is having that, I'd like to hear about it. But I think we're going to have to have some outreach to WSSC to see if we can figure out. I know they've been doing some work to address sewer problems in that part of the city, but it does seem as if when there's very heavy rain, maybe there's some merging of the storm water with the sewage, which of course isn't supposed to happen and normally doesn't. So this is just an initial mention, but maybe we can huddle at a later point to talk about how to approach that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. I think next week, I will be at the National League of Cities Leadership Conference in Little Rock for a couple of days, and so maybe just a little delayed in returning emails. And the other thing I'd ask the city manager in an upcoming And the other thing I'd ask the city manager in upcoming, city manager comments, Ms. Kern reminded me this evening regarding bus shelters. I know there's, SHA has a new policy on it that they've talked us about, that I think it would be helpful to have some information for the public about the, the new policies regarding bus shelters. And that's it for me. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Celebrating, we have a second person getting the homestretch funds for moving out of an apartment into a, into a home, into a condo with our Affordable Housing Fund monies. And so, we're happy about that. Last week, the city committed to joining Racial Equity Here, which is a project of the Government Alliance of Racial Equity, of which we're a member. And one of the things that's, well, I'll go ahead and post the background information on this, but it's also nice that there's some local organizations that are partnering with us in the Racial Equity Here organization. Capital City Confectionery, Crossroads Community Food Network, Making a New United People, ManUp, Brandon Johns was here earlier this evening, Tacoma Foundation, and What's My Bias Incorporated. And so, we're hoping that their, the Racial Equity Here approach, which focuses on learn, act, and partner. Learn about race, racism, and racial equity. Act to advance racial equity by using a simple, simple racial equity tool. And partner locally and across the country to drive a common agenda. And as you're having all these conversations, this is another area, I think, for assistance. I have a little picture on my handout from, in association with giving kudos to Paula Losowski of our Recreation Department for her senior camp. Seniors, our older adults, got to wear these orange t-shirts and had a blast. I have had only rave reviews from these folks who had a week of summer camp. They went, the theme was land, air, and sea. There were sixteen participants. They went to the Baltimore Aquarium, an art class place, the DC Radio Control Club, the BNO Railroad Museum, they went on a sale tour, they had an art collage workshop, a Color Me Feng Shui workshop. Anyway, they had a blast. I only heard rave reviews from the folks. And so, next week, next year, we're going to be expanding our senior summer camps because they're very popular and particularly things that are art-related are very, people get really excited about the field trips and the work. Giving kudos to Jessica Garrison and Michael Godlowski of our Police Department, who were both promoted to the rank of corporal this week. And I shout out, actually, to Rob Ratcliffe, who's at the back of our auditorium today. The Tacoma Park Folk Festival folks put on the anniversary, 40th Anniversary Now and Then event, and they sent quite a rave review of City TV's work related to coordination of the event and particularly to Rob Ratcliffe. He received the following message. "I want to thank you for doing an extraordinary job on Saturday for the Now and Then celebration. It wasn't just on Saturday. You did a huge amount of work in the weeks leading up to the event, and you always did it with a positive attitude and kindness. I appreciate your patience with us as our requests escalated again and again for editing, music, and so on. It was a pleasure to work with you and the rest of the Tacoma Cable TV staff, and I look forward to working with you in the future." So, kudos to our wonderful staff. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Any questions for the city manager?
All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. Our first item on our voting session is the First Reading Ordinance authorizing property transfer between the former John Nevin Andrews School and Spring Park.
Thank you. And please have your attention to the item that's on salmon paper because we did have to update, we had some corrections to the, to the agenda cover page that got missed as we were having the Maryland Municipal League Conference and other things last week. This is, I discussed this before, but this is the First Reading Ordinance authorizing the land, land paper corrections regarding the boundaries of the former John Nevin Andrews School at 117 Elm Avenue and Spring Park. And as I explained before, the, as the John Nevin Andrews property had gone up for sale, the interested purchasers did a survey and determined and found out that the land records did not reflect how the property's been used for decades and how the tax maps have shown it for decades. And so, those, those maps need to be changed and updated. There's no controversy about the, the change in that the area within the fence line would stay with the school-type property and the area that's parkland stays parkland. The, there's one small adjustment to the map, which just allows better control of the property between the fence and Elm Avenue that allows the entrance to the trail of Spring Park to remain on city land. I did, I don't think there's anything more that needs to be discussed. I could answer questions. There had been some questions about things like stormwater and that kind of thing.
Can you just answer that?
Sure, sure. Let me just get my.
Speaking to the mic. We asked a couple of questions about the potential effects on the city's responsibility for stormwater.
Right. And so.
Control.
Right. So, what it basically comes down to is that the.
We're already doing it.
We thought it was our land, so we took care of it.
Right.
For all these years. And so, the stormwater that's been generated by the school property has gone onto the land. It's not been a particular issue, but it's, but what we've been maintaining for a long time. The, we've made some improvements in that area, including putting in, replacing the old asphalt trail with a permeable surface trail. So, you know, it, it helps that situation. If there's to be any change to the property, the new owners would need to live up to any standards, to our new standards of stormwater improvements, and that, that would be a requirement. But at this, it doesn't make any.
The schooling.
That's right.
Yeah.
Anything that would impact, that, that would need to be addressed, they would be responsible for. There were some, there were some questions about the fact that the old maps show underlying kind of residential lots. That really doesn't have anything to do with this project, the simply correcting the property lines. If for some reason, the land, instead of having a school on it, were developed into single-family prop homes, there wouldn't need to be a change because there's adequate space for, those lots are of adequate size for single-family properties. So, there's not, I think, any issue that sets, there's nothing that puts us in an awkward situation in the future going forward with anything that's allowed. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't have a question. I just want to make clear because I think there is some potential confusion on listservs that this is something that we are working with the Potomac Conference of the Seventh Day Adventist.
That's right.
Church because they own the property.
That's right.
There is interest by the daycare, Centrenia, in this property. However, they do not own it and we, there's.
We would be doing, we would be doing this in any event.
Right.
As soon as we were alerted to the fact that there is a discrepancy in the land records, it's appropriate for us to correct them.
Exactly. So, I know there's just been a lot of, and, you know, as we heard from our traffic engineers tonight, they're going to have to do their own traffic study.
That's right.
And everything else before that process moves forward.
And that's, that's a separate process.
That's a separate process. In addition, I just want to emphasize that this is part of Spring Park, that we have considered part of our park for many years. And if we were, if the same manager can correct me, to delay this decision at all, then we would have to cordon off this section of our park.
Right. We would, we would end up blocking a section of the trail, and that really means that the access from Elm Avenue would be precluded.
Yeah. So, anyway, I just wanted to make those points clear. Councilmember Siemens, do you have any questions?
Thank you. No, I just wanted to suggest that the council consider giving Mr. Mack the Senior Endurance Award.
Oh, he's not 11:00 o'clock yet. This is the early night.
Thank you for being here.
Councilwoman Kostick.
I just wanted to ask briefly, one of the things that residents have asked about a little bit is the potential implications, tax implications, if this, the school property were to be developed into housing instead of a school. Do you foresee there, there would be any, I mean, it seems to me we're exchanging a similar amount of land, so there would not be a tax implication. Is that correct?
Right. Well, we did, our, our city attorney looked at this and said that there's no need for appraisals and there's no need for exchange of funds of any way, in any way that it, it is something that, it's a neutral situation.
Because it's a similar.
It's a similar size, similar size of property, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. All right. Would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilwoman Kostick, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Circe, any other discussion or questions? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. Mr. Mack, you can go home.
You can, you can stick through the rest of it tonight.
Or you stay. The, the next voting item is.
Any cake left, council?
Oh, I don't know. Is a Single Reading Ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for the Lunch and Learn program. Any discussion?
I don't have anything to say about it, I'm sorry.
All right, it's all right. Would someone like to move this, please?
Can I ask one quick question? How much did we spend last year? Was it the same amount?
It, it was the same amount. And this is part of the.
Because I thought there was a little funding crisis last year. That's with the county budget, not with this budget. That's why I'm asking.
I'm not sure how that impacted what we provided them. Yes, and this, this is part of the new community partnership, newish community partnership program.
So, it's not really a grant. It's not, it's, it's a contract for service.
Exactly. And we can renew it up to three years, and this is basically renewing our agreement.
I don't think she heard. I'm sorry, can we have?
Sorry.
So, perhaps Deputy City Manager can repeat what you just said.
I was just going to note that this is the second year of the community partnership program, and when we award a contract through this program, it can be renewed up to three years. And this is this, we're essentially renewing the contract. So, it'll be at the same location, essentially the same service will be provided.
Do we know how many kids have enrolled so far?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
All right.
Would someone like? I would like to just say that I, I was confused with another program in, in the same area that had financial issues last year, so I apologize.
All right. Would someone like to move the ordinance?
Some of.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Dibala, any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Circe.
I just want to say that I am thankful that we continue to provide resources to this program. There are a number of, of youth in Ward 6 that actually participate in the program. And so, just want to reiterate how important it is to provide opportunities for the youth in the community during the summer, where there may be an absence of resources to do other things or jobs and the like. So, again, I just want to thank everyone for continuing to direct resources towards this program.
Councilmember Smith?
Oh.
Oh, okay. Terrific. Does City Clerk have her light on first?
It's ready to.
Okay, all right. Would you like to call the roll?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Awesome. All right, now, our last item. Can we do it in six minutes? No. Okay. The recommendations for alternative to curb painting, and I will welcome our Director of Public Works.
Fortunately, we don't do painting this late in.
Yes.
Yeah, in the interest of time, we can keep this very short. I think this, we've had this conversation about what to do relative to marking out areas on either side of driveways for residents. Years ago, the city would paint at a person's request, five feet on either side of the driveway apron. As a result of recommendation by residents who were dealing with a number of aesthetic issues in the community, the council took that advice and issued a moratorium on curb painting. So, for many years, the city has not offered that service. From a practical point of view, it was a time drag for staff doing those individual driveway aprons. It also was something that within a couple of weeks of the paint, you know, being applied, it started to look a little shabby. It was also something that didn't last very long. Depending on the time of year it was painted, it could be gone within months, certainly faded within six months. So, it was something that was, you know, kind of not a great solution, though it did provide some relief for those residents that requested that. And issues of tight parking, where people park too close to the driveways, making it difficult for residents to, to leave. So, once the moratorium came into place, my department started looking around at what other cities do, and, and not a lot of communities do offer the curb painting service in general. We've gone to a sign-only situation for things like designating the no parking area at an intersection from the stop sign back, rather than painting the curb, because it's, it's more long-lasting, it's more visible, and it's just easier for the police to enforce. And there are some areas where we do still paint curbs. We've defined those as safety issues as in front of fire hydrants, or in particular a case on Holly Avenue around the elementary school, trying to designate the parking and no parking areas. We implemented curb painting with the city manager's approval in that very particular case. So, in looking at other options, we've been using more and more thermoplastic applications in the city. It's a longer-lasting product, has some reflexivity that's, reflectivity that's helpful for visibility. And there's an ease of application that's a little neater. So, we looked into a pilot program of using thermoplastic lines to designate basically a edge of parking for, for, on the street, on either side of each driveway apron. I think there were four or five pilot sites that were installed, several on Sherman Avenue, one on Fifth Avenue. And we've just kind of been watching it. The initial installation, there was some disagreement as to the distance that we installed it from either side of a driveway. We went back and looked at the curb, the code, and the code clearly states five feet on either side of the driveway apron. So, my, my take from a kind of a watching it and looking at it situation is I think what we're able to offer is something that looks pretty decent, lasts pretty long, seems to be effective in terms of identifying where a car could, should or shouldn't park and kind of given a visual clue to drivers that may otherwise just not even pay attention as they're parking their car. So, in the interest of trying to address this issue for residents that still call us and ask us to paint the curbs, and we say, no, sorry, we don't do that anymore, this has come up as an, as an alternative to try to address that request, as well as, you know, limit the staff time, limit the less-than-attractive look of it, and provide, you know, kind of a service that we're getting asked to provide. So, we basically feel like this is an option that seems to check most of the boxes and can be done without too much of an impact on cost or staff time, particularly in that we think that once it's installed, it lasts for years, not months. So, it's something that can kind of stay in place for a while.
I'd love to add just a note. There's a fairly substantive racial equity note here, that because this has been traditionally, the curb painting's traditionally been something that people have called in about, it tends to be single-family homeowners that do so. One of the things that, you know, came to me today that I think we could talk about is in areas where we think that there's a number of apartment buildings, but, and there may be some parking issues, that we could just proactively either do this or contact the apartment buildings management to, to see if it makes sense. So, that's something that, you know, we've been sensitive about it not just being in areas where you've got single-family homes, that they get the benefit of this. Certainly, if somebody has a particular problem, we're willing to hear, get that request. But I thought it might make some sense to, with your eyes as well as, as some of our outreach, identify some other locations where we think it may be useful.
Great. Ms. Bracy, do you see any downsides to this?
Not particularly. I mean, one of the things I did mention is the longevity of the product. If someone for some reason changes their mind or the house changes ownership and someone says, I don't want that white line on either side of my driveway apron, eh, it's going to take a while to wear off. We were in a case where we installed it in a foot in the wrong direction. we were able to grind the pavement and reinstall. So it's, you know, one of those things that it's, once it's there, it's pretty much there. Again, it does take some time, but it doesn't seem like an inordinate amount of time. We also don't tend to get a huge number of requests. I mean, that's probably because for the past few years, we've been saying no, so people stopped asking. Once this is put into place, we might sort of get a, you know, a couple dozen people that make that request right off the bat, and, you know, we'll just have to address as it comes.
And can you address about how this does not work on state highways?
Oh, yeah, thanks, after, well, one of the things that, we got a letter from some residents, I believe in Peters Ward, living on Piney Branch Road, very happy to see this being looked at because of the difficulty they have in backing out of their driveways on Piney Branch Road. One of the challenges is, is any state road, the city is not allowed to do pavement marking, signage, or other things without state highway's permission. So in cases of Piney Branch Road and other places, we would definitely have to communicate with state highway and get their, get their take on what they would allow. In the past, they've been fairly rigid with these kind of things. There may be some flexibility and some ability to communicate. They may perceive the parking lane as slightly different than the drive lane, though they're pretty rigid about signs and sign poles. It would just be something that we'd have to take up with the state highway folks, perhaps in the next quarterly meeting, we can, you know, raise it. But currently on state roads, we don't do any signage or marking without their permission.
Councilwoman Circe.
So, thank you so much. Part of the challenges that I've experienced in my ward are the circles, and people parking way too close to the roundabouts, such that they actually create hazards, or parking way too close to various intersections and the like, so that turning. Would this type of material also be used for kind of designating those no parking zones as well, so that they, it would kind of stay a little longer and not necessarily fade away as quickly?
We could certainly look at that. One of the things we'd start with is try to see if we could install a sign in those cases where they aren't, you know, no parking with the line and the arrow, no parking from here to the corner kind of thing. Those signs tend to be the best visible reminder to folks about where to park. And there are places where they don't exist, so there are plenty of, you know, distances close to intersections where they don't exist. There are also places where they do, and people ignore it and park in front of it. But we could start with the signs, if the sign isn't working, we could also always add this as a second, a second visual cue to try to improve the compliance.
And so for, in terms of kind of prioritizing, because again, you know, if residents don't know to call, or they're just not aware, they won't call. Are there, is there a way to kind of pre-identify some streets that are, maybe this would be the responsibility of some of my colleagues here and myself, to pre-identify some streets that we know have been particularly problematic in terms of parking, restricting access for vehicles coming through? I know where I live on Wildwood, we've had a number of hit-and-runs because when cars are parked on both sides, it just, it makes a very tight path forward, and so people sideswipe you a lot. Those may be incidents where, you know, prioritizing those types of markings would be important because there's some known challenges with cars parked in those particular areas. So would it be helpful for, you know, myself or others to kind of try to pre-identify and encourage residents on those problematic streets to ask for something like this?
Yeah, I think just having it, having an option available now when you hear the complaint or see the particular problem, it's gonna be, you know, a helpful thing that we can suggest to people. In part of the cover sheet, we sort of identified the areas where, you know, we hear or have seen. Typically, it has to do with that commercial residential mix, where there's a lot of people trying to park in a residential neighborhood, and there's really not enough space. So that's traditionally where we have the issue. And we're really seeing this as an issue with driveway, you know, parking too close to the driveways in particular. There's also plenty of other parking constraint issues, but the idea of the thermoplastic on the street is really to designate a, kind of a parking zone relative to access for people to get in and out of their driveway. So I'd say we'd start there, and then if we find other uses for it, we could certainly look at it in terms of how effective it would be. But we'd still probably, you know, try to start with signs for those areas of the streets and intersections, and then use this for the driveway aprons.
Great, thank you.
Great, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for bringing this to us at this time of day or night.
Yeah.
I prefaced my comments in that I am enthusiastic about this, and two concerns. One is, Public Works has a lot of work to do.
Yes, we do.
And, you know, at budget time, we talk about looking for ways to save money and not spend so much, and I see this as being a potential time sink for your workers, which translates into lots of money. As the city manager has told us, that staff time is really where this government spends most of its money. So my concern is, and I appreciate you're looking for a, kind of a low-budget way of doing it, but I still think that it's, the thermoplast takes time to put down. I'm not so sure if we looked at percentage-wise, that it's that, that much less than actually painting the curbs themselves, except that it does last longer. My fear is that, that once residents start seeing this being installed, there's gonna be a, an extreme overload of requests for this work, and it's gonna be a budget breaker for us.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I could see where that could potentially happen. I mean, I'm only basing it on the number of requests we used to get when we painted the curbs, so we had a pretty steady stream, we knew what that was. In terms of the installation, it actually is about half the time as painting, but that's because painting has some other things we have to do. We usually have to trim grass, we usually have to use the blowers, we used to have, usually have to sweep, because again, we're painting the curb itself, whereas with the thermoplastic here in the street, much easier to clean, not a lot of prep. We have heat guns that we use to, it comes in four-foot lengths, just plop it on the ground, heat it up, it melts. So it, you know, there are some, there are some ease of use, though it, absolutely, and I appreciate your attention to that, it does take time. It's not something that you can pop off, you know, a bunch in a day. So it would require staff time to do.
My inclination at this point is to vote against this, but I think it would be helpful for additional information when you bring it back, and I'm sure you will be bringing it back, to maybe do a little bit more detail on the time difference between this and the curb painting. And not just, I guess, it's hard, how do you judge how much we're gonna put into this? Because we could be opening the floodgates. All right, thank you.
Councilman Kovar.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Braithwaite, for bringing this forward. Just a few comments and thoughts, I agree that the purpose of it should be for safety, so in addition to the area around hydrants, I agree that we should look at any area, including around apartment buildings, where there's a safety issue. And I think in terms of what Councilmember Siemens just mentioned, if necessary, we could draw up some protocols, so that it's not, you know, literally anytime anybody wants it, but where there's a safety concern, and so the letters that I passed on to my colleagues earlier today, I believe it was, both from residents of Piney Branch, so I think I've mentioned this before, but one of the residents, Mary DeRue, had me park in her driveway around 5:00 o'clock and try to back out, and you can't do it. Like, it's not like, it's hard, you're just putting your life in your hands when you do it. And so I get the part about state highway, and so I'm just saying that, you know, I wouldn't accept the idea that they wouldn't do that, and I would suggest that we contact them to formally ask them, but the alternative is better enforcement, and I think everybody has sort of agreed, and even the people on Piney Branch have found, you know, they call up, if they take the trouble to stop when they're on their way to work, but they call the police, and the police come out, and, you know, there's not really a marker, and maybe the car is kind of close, but is it exactly five feet or not? And I don't blame the police for not issuing a ticket in that case. This is just a way of, hopefully, removing that enforcement part, which I think is more expensive than either of the other two things. And I think on average, people tend to see those stripes and be more likely to obey them, and then if they didn't, there's no doubt if your car is sticking over. So I think that if we balance it out in a way, and say, you know, it's not just because you kind of want it on a quiet street like where I live, but on a major street or a major intersection, even if the sign's there and people aren't paying attention, or in a larger apartment building where maybe the entrance tends to get impinged upon, I think in all those situations, it would probably work, and so I'd encourage us to go forward with it, and if necessary, work hard to persuade state highway if there's really gonna be an objection to that, to go forward with it, so thank you.
Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you very much for this information and for bringing this forward. I'm glad that we're moving forward with this and having the discussion. Excuse me, my voice is going at this time of night. I know there are a lot of residents who are really interested in this, and that would find benefit from having the opportunity to have a little more space for the safety of backing out and not feeling so worried about being hit by somebody along the way. I do understand Councilmember Siemens' concerns regarding finances, and I was wondering if, I'm not sure if it would make a financial impact, but if there were, if you were to schedule certain times of the year when you would do it, if that might be something to consider as a way to kind of dedicate staff at that time and have all the materials and everyone sort of focused on that at that time?
Yeah, we don't do it during leaf season, I'll say.
Right, right, obviously, but maybe if it were to be like, three times a year, you do this at a specific time. And I also appreciate the focus on the racial equity impact statement, and this as a complaint-based system, and I think there have been some good ideas regarding the apartment buildings and council members identifying areas that might be in need, as well as us communicating to residents that this is something they can request. I also wonder if maybe we could put an announcement into the newsletter every spring, and just say, just so you're aware, this is an option if you have concerns about access to your driveway. We don't, I think it's a balance between not wanting to open the floodgates, but at the same time, I do think, if this is a policy that we have, we have to make sure that people are aware of it widely. And so I think that if we pass this, we need to make sure that everyone has access equally, and we seek out some ways to make that possible. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dibala.
Yeah, so, so we, are we doing this, no, we're not doing this now only on a pilot basis, right?
Yeah, we just did five or so driveways.
And so where there's an area of public safety concern, like a hydrant, we're doing signs now?
No, we do paint.
We do still, okay, so this would substitute for the paint? Instead of painting, we would do this?
Well, we don't currently paint anymore. We used to paint five feet on either side of a driveway on the curb. We haven't done that for several years, so this would enable us to offer an alternative to that.
Right, but if, for public safety.
We do actually paint in front of hydrants.
Yeah, we paint the curb in front of hydrants, and there was a, some curb painting that was done around Holly Avenue in the elementary school as a result of that.
And so would this be a substitute for that?
No, those would still continue.
Still continue painting, okay. I might have stepped out when you said it, but why did we stop painting on demand?
It was an issue raised-
I must have missed it, I'm sorry.
It was an issue raised by residents as part of overall kind of aesthetic, aesthetic concerns, and, I'm, I'm, uniformity, sorry, uniformity of street signs. There was a wide range of things that were raised. And it is fairly unique. Nobody else in our jurisdiction, nobody else around the Washington Metropolitan area paints curbs for residents on either side of the driveway. So it was, it was a service we were offering that was fairly unique, and it also created some unattractive peeling paint situations, most of which are gone now, 'cause, you know, it's been long enough that all the hair peeled off. You didn't know, we did it now.
I guess I lean toward what Councilmember Siemens was saying, that I would like to see the focus be on public safety and on apartment buildings and on streets where we know there's a problem that are identified either by staff or council, and I'm kind of reluctant to start up a program that caters to one segment of the community without a good public safety reason for doing it.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Braithwaite, for staying with us at this late hour. Regarding the apartment buildings, you know, I think that the newsletter is just one part of it. I think like Ms. Love said, outreach, but I think we need to make sure that a couple of times a year, we put this in front of the apartment managers, especially the larger buildings. Because, you know, they have so much going on, they have to recertify if they're getting tax credits for their tenants, they have to recertify the residents. There are a lot of issues going on in that property. So it'd be really good to make sure that they know about this if they want to participate. And they might have questions, and, you know, they just don't have a lot of time to follow up with city staff on issues. But there's one thing that I do want to see right before the council. As you know, residents, and a number of residents in Ward 5 are trying to have some traffic mediation or changes done to, to a street in the ward. And on that street, there are a number of apartment buildings, some of them very large apartment buildings. And, you know, when we initially wrote these regulations, I don't know how much attention was given to outreach to residents that live in these buildings, because it's really, really difficult, even if you have management companies that are willing to give residents that are proposing these changes access to the buildings, that does not necessarily mean that the tenants are going to answer their door, one or two, they're gonna talk to some stranger about this proposal before them. So I think that, you know, your office with the city manager, the deputy city manager, should really consider, how do we talk to tenants regarding these type of potential changes? You know, I mean, it's hard to hit the threshold, you know, 60%, 75%, when, you know, people are not really willing to talk to you in the first place. So just something to think about.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, that's a different topic than the painting.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, our traffic calm regulations, I envision that the council will take that up again before too long. Just, you know, this issue really, for the large apartment buildings, many of which have their own parking, so this curb painting wouldn't affect them. It would typically be smaller apartments, garden-style apartments, that don't have off-street parking, that have on-street parking, and in doing so, in looking for spaces, they end up kind of having tight, limited spaces, and end up blocking driveways for their apartment or other residents nearby. So it really ends up not so much being an interest to the apartment management folks, but to the people who are impacted by folks parking in front of their driveway. Those are the people that we need to reach.
So if this is going to be focusing on the small and garden style, I would suggest that you reach out to the owners of the building, the landlords, and the tenants that live in the building, because that's the only way that you're going to get, you know. If the landlords see it, then they might contact the city, and, you know, the tenants might say that this is really an issue worth following up on.
Sure.
So I'll just add, thank you for piloting this program, particularly on Sherman, because this was a, an issue, a safety issue for those residents, and I would just like to reiterate what my colleague said. I think I'd like to see us move forward with this and prioritize, obviously, the areas where there are safety concerns as well. obviously, the areas where there are safety concerns, as well as making sure that we're doing the outreach to, particularly to the areas with the garden apartments. What other direction do you need from us?
Well, you guys laid out the moratorium, so if you want to change it, we can, we can put together language to make that possible.
I think we would like to do that with the concerns that Councilmember Siemens and others have expressed, that we don't want to open any floodgates on the Public Works Department, and so I think, thinking of a plan on how to prioritize and make sure that, you know, you're not getting flooded with calls.
May I ask you a question? So, as I recall, and I think it happened before I was on the council, but when we talked about it the last time, there was no ordinance, right? So there's nothing to repeal.
It was, you know what, it was simply direction by the council, just said out loud, and it was not memorialized in a document, and so it would be nice, as we bring something back, that we then have something written.
Yes, there was a lot of confusion around that. So, we're, yeah, so we want to do this, so there's no confusion, and so, yes, Ms. Braithwaite, when you have it, you can bring it back to us, and we will take it up, hopefully before 11:30 at night. And I just want to say, before we close tonight, thank you for the work that was done on Lee Avenue, right off of Carroll. I think the residents are seeing an improvement there, it's a tight area, but thank you to your staff for getting on that quickly.
Uh huh.
All right, I think we are adjourned.
Good night.